This conference will now be recorded.
Can we have the roll, please?
Alderman Tom Gotti?
Here.
Alderman Ted Gotti?
Here.
Alderman Repella? Alderman Nichols?
Here.
Alderman Taylor?
Here.
Alderman Savannick?
Here.
Alderman Langdon?
Here.
Alderman Schmidt?
Here.
All are present with the absence of Alderman Repella.
The first sentiment on our agenda this evening is a temporary suspension of the rules. Do we have a motion? Or a settlement?
At this time, I'll move that we temporarily suspend our rules of the common council and the mayor so that we can use our electronic devices for this tell web conference.
I'll second.
So motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. If there's no objection, I'd like to ask that we move to Resolution 3-21. Greg Johnson is here, and that's why I was waiting for Melanie as well. Is there any objections to moving forward to that? Seeing none, Greg, would you like to start us out, please?
Sure. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. I'm going to present the sale results from the bond sale this morning, which was to refund the electric utilities state trust fund revenue loan that was outstanding. We conducted a competitive sale this morning. We received a total of four bids. The winning bid on the bonds was Bankers Bank out of Madison, Wisconsin, with a true interest cost of 0.7281%. The total debt service savings to the electric utility from 2022 through 2029 came in at $1,561,877. That is $337,880 more than our pre-sale estimates. So very good interest rates today for the city and the utility. So that's really the only purpose for this bond issue, was just to refinance the existing loan, which had an interest rate of 4.25%, to take advantage of more favorable rates available in the market at this time. The cost of issuance expense came in less than estimated. There was also a premium bid that was submitted by bankers, which we used to downsize the bond issue. So the final amount is $8,385,000. And so if you consider the resolution that's on your agenda, the final amount is $8,385,000, which is $255,000 less than what was initially authorized by the council. So in summary, very good results and good savings to the electric utility to lower their debt service costs over the next several years. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Greg, could you give us that number again? $8,385,000, did you say? And how much? What was it?
The total savings over from 2022 to 2029 was $1,561,877. The final amount of the bond issue is now $8,385,000.
On the button?
On the button, yes.
Okay. That's what I thought. Alrighty. Thank you. Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I'll move that we adopt our 321, the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of $8,385,000 electric system revenue refunding bond series 2021/8 of the city of Manasha, Calumet, and Winnebago Counties, Wisconsin, and providing for the payment of the bond and other details with respect to the bonds.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. In reading through the documents earlier today, I think this is steam plant debt, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so with today's bond issuance in connection with the refinancing that was done several years ago, how much, do we know how much total interest has been saved through these two steps?
I can tell you in total, in terms of what the city has saved with what was refunded last year and what was refunded here this evening, and this is spread over, you know, savings between the electric utility, the levy, and some tip districts. The total savings with the two refundings last year and the refunding this evening is $2,913,000.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I know that there were some savings incurred when this debt was originally refinanced through the Wisconsin State Trust Fund. So is that a question that Melanie could answer for us? I'm sorry, I didn't call.
Yeah, I'm not sure if she's here. She was here for a minute, and I see that she is not, unless she's caller one or two.
I am on the phone.
Okay.
Can you hear me? I don't have the exact numbers of the savings from when we refinanced the WTPI transaction uphand. I could gladly give that information to you if you wanted to see what the total savings were between the two transactions.
That would be appreciated, and I apologize for not calling earlier today. Thank you. That was my question.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Tom Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Savannick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thanks, Greg.
You're welcome, Greg. I didn't want to make your way through the whole discussion.
Oh, I appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good rest of your day.
Thank you.
Item?
Thanks, Melanie.
Item F is reported Department of Staff and Consultants. And Director McKinney is here this evening. And she has a fancy PowerPoint.
And Randy is here also.
I was here about 6:03.
Could you please make your presenter?
I'm trying, but it doesn't like you for some reason. There we go.
Actually, I think you just muted me and then unmuted me. There we go.
There you go.
Okay. Well, good evening, everybody. There's so much to share tonight. We have heard and learned a lot more this week about all of the components of the vaccine and what's going on. So I'm anxious to talk to you. Let me go back here. I gotta go previous. So right now, the case counts. We're going to go quickly through this, but the case counts are 1,709 laboratory confirmed cases, and that's as of yesterday, 180 probable, 45 active, 1,827 recovered, 7,350 negative. We've had 93 hospitalizations over the course of the pandemic and 17 fatalities. So the good news is the number of confirmed cases has gone down some. We've had 84 cases this past two-week period in comparison to 109 the previous two-week period. Our case rate has gone from 622.5 to 479.7 per 100,000 population. Our activity level, however, is still considered very high. It's what Harvard calls the red zone. But I'd like to show you the chart, and you saw this probably in the handout that you were provided. But it's interesting to look back and see, the mayor had pointed this out to me today, that the level we're at now is about the same as the level we were at back in September. So what we did see there in September, unlike now, is that we ramped up. And then we came down. So we had a very high trajectory then. What we're seeing now is a little leveling off of cases and actually a decline. So we're hoping this continues with everybody's mitigation strategies. And we've had, when we do our seven-day average case incidence per 100,000, we have 29.4 cases per 100,000. Our goal is less than one. So we have a ways to go. Our positivity rate, our goal is less than five. The World Health Organization uses 10. It has come down a bit. We're at 19.1 positive tests per day. And our average number of tests per day, we like it to be about 28. So we've been testing fewer, around 27 per day. Hospital capacity, again, inpatient beds, they're filled, they've got quite a bit of capacity that they're occupied, rather, and that about 83.5 ICU beds are occupied and about 10.5 beds are occupied with patients with COVID. So those are sort of in the caution area. We really want to watch that. And then our metrics for suppression, really, we're still in that very high category. The state calls critically high 1,000 per 100,000 people. We're still in the red category for the Harvard metrics. So basically, we're still cautioning people to be wary of being in crowds and gatherings, staying at home with families indoors or household members, and really going out for essentials, and then still making sure we're using the masks, social distancing, hand hygiene. Again, we've been looking the last few weeks at the age groups, and it has risen a bit, a little bit higher than the percentage of total cases in this under-20 age group. We are doing a pretty good job of keeping it lower in the 60-plus age group, but we're still seeing a lot in that 20- to 39-year-old age group. We are still encouraging people to test if they have symptoms or if they have close contact with somebody who is COVID-positive. They should still avail themselves to testing. We've got several sites listed here. It's all on our website at Data Care Physicians, Data Care Mobile, at Christ the Rock, Sunny View Expo Center. Now, just a note that because of the vaccine, they have moved the testing site from the Expo Center in Appleton to Reed Golf Course for testing. And then the UW Oshkosh Culvers Family Welcome Center. Couple vaccination updates. Really quick, we're still working very hard with the Fox Valley Healthcare Emergency Readiness Coalition, and they're trying to make sure that entities that require vaccination have providers. We are providing Manasha residents multiple opportunities to obtain vaccination. City of Appleton, Calumet, Outagimian, Winnebago County health departments have come together to do a center in Appleton at the Expo Center. We have area health systems that are working hard to provide vaccine, and in fact, people now can, they may be hearing from their health systems to make appointments. Pharmacies, our Fox Valley Herp, and our Wisconsin Army National Guard. Let me just give you a couple updates here on vaccines. So this Phase 1 are currently eligible individuals, frontline healthcare personnel, and the primary vaccinator for that is employers. We have worked with the Manasha Joint School District when they have people that are on the front line doing health-related items with children as well. The long-term care facility and residents, the primary vaccinator are pharmacies through a federal pharmacy program. The emergency medical system, police, fire, and corrections, the primary vaccinators are the local health departments. And as we said previously, we have done that vaccination for our firefighters and police department. And we continue to do 1A vaccinations when, for example, individuals or entities can't find pharmacies that they're not in that pharmacy program. We have taken care of their residents. We've also done some of our free clinics. And now we're moving into the adults aged 65 and older. Primary vaccinator there is still healthcare providers and pharmacies, but as you know, we've been working with other agencies to get that done. We were informed last week that Phase 1B will be tentatively open on March 1, 2021, and the primary vaccinator there for education and childcare would be the school healthcare staff, the health systems, pharmacies, or local health departments. And since we are the school healthcare staff, we will be working with the Manasha Joint School District to take care of their needs, as well as the parochial schools and UW. Individuals enrolled in Medicaid long-term care will be eligible in that area, and the primary vaccinator is healthcare providers and pharmacies. There are some public-facing essential workers that are in 1B, and that's our utility and communication infrastructure, public transit, and food supply chain individuals. And again, arrangements on-site are often made with healthcare systems, pharmacies, or local health departments. And also in that area are non-frontline healthcare personnel that don't have regular contact with patients. The primary vaccinator will be the employer or healthcare provider. And then finally, 1C, which is under discussion currently, and we don't have a timeframe for this yet, are people 65 to 74 years with high-risk medical conditions, underlying medical conditions, and other essential workers. So you might be asking, well, what are my options? Where do we receive this vaccine? Number one, our healthcare providers and healthcare systems, local pharmacists, other community clinics, such as Fox Cities Exhibition Center in Appleton, which is an ongoing site. And then over the weekend, we made you aware of the Sunny View Expo Center in Oshkosh that had a unique opportunity. They partnered with, not partnered with, but they were approached by a healthcare system and are working with them to take this week and vaccinate first people 75 and older, and then latter part of the week, other age groups. And in talking with the health officer in Winnebago County, he said this is really a unique opportunity. They don't expect that that level of available vaccine will be a sustainable project. But obviously, they, we were all very pleased to see that the area got additional vaccine and could get people in. The Manasha clinics are ongoing. And right now, we will begin scheduling our 65-plus beginning Wednesday morning. So we'll be scheduling for February 9 and February 16. And we have to limit the 1A-eligible people and those over 65. The registration again will be Wednesday morning. We have been, I'm glad to tell you that we have been approved for a Wisconsin Army National Guard site. It's called a mobile vaccine team that will be coming to Manasha Senior Center, or City Center, rather, on the 23rd, 24th, and 25th of February. And we'll get a sign-up and registration announced for you in the coming weeks. We're looking at future sites. We have been working with Martin Rudd, who is the Vice Chancellor at UW-Fox Cities, and he has agreed that the UW-Fox Cities could be a site for the Manasha Health Department as we transition, especially as we ramp up these vaccinations. So our plan is to hire on more staff, and I believe you have a memo in your pocket. And we will be looking to get your approval so we can put together additional teams to vaccinate our community. So with that, I'll stop and see if there are any questions.
Alderman Hall?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor. Nancy, I just heard on the radio the Oshkosh and all the nurses in the nursing school are going to be helping out. Is there any way that we could get those girls to help us rather than paying people?
Actually, we are. The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh nursing students have always had a rotation, both in the spring and in the fall, here. And the spring cohort is going to be orienting with us this Thursday and plans to vaccinate. So they have a pretty robust program for their nursing students. We get nine allocated to our health department over the course of the semester, and we'll be putting them to work right alongside of our nursing staff. So thank you for that, mentioning that, because that is going to be a welcome addition to our teams. We do appreciate.
If we get those nurses, Nancy, do we still have to hire some?
Yes, we will have to hire them because the nursing students only have so many hours that they can offer in their clinical rotation. And they have to do additional experiences as well as COVID-19 vaccines.
Okay. One more question. I know you said some COVID vaccine shots aside for the police and the fire. Where do the elected officials stand on this? Where's our special day?
You have to very bottom, Randy. Your last.
So actually, you know, if you are 65 and older, this is your time, right? And I think that as time goes on, we will be identifying, you know, that in 1C or beyond with the general public.
Okay. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. So Nancy, the reports out there are that the state of Wisconsin is the worst state in the country as far as vaccinations. Have you seen that?
I think we're probably right in the middle. I did get a, so I think we were 34th when I looked last. That's, you know, it's not the best, obviously. And I did get a memo, which, if you have a minute, I'd like to just share with you. Today, I shared it with our Incident Command and with our Board of Health today. So it reads that the Department of Health Services' goal is to vaccinate as many Wisconsinites as possible in a safe, efficient, and equitable way. This past week, we received requests for nearly four times as much vaccine as the state had allocated to them. This tells us two things. We have a robust network of vaccinators ready and willing to administer COVID-19 vaccine, and two, we need more vaccine in Wisconsin.
So then, Nancy, you said one word that sticks out, and that's request. So that was the number that the state of Wisconsin is requesting. That is not a guarantee, correct?
So I think you might have heard that wrong. We received requests. So that means the local health departments and other vaccinators requested four times as much vaccine as the state was allocated or given. So the state and the federal didn't get enough to distribute. That is going to be one of our limiting factors. So, you know, we have heard that for the next few weeks now, it will be lower allocations. Some health departments have actually been allocated less than they requested, which is difficult. So hopefully, with the supply chain being increased and the ordering increased for additional vaccine, we will be allocated more as a state. So that is a very limiting factor. That's why we're trying to layer the opportunities that our health department can offer or other health departments can offer our residents. So any opportunity we can possibly get out there to the public, we're trying, whether it be here or with the healthcare providers or with the Appleton site, wherever it is, we are trying very hard to do that. We are doing that.
So, so it's not a given. I mean, you can't, to go off Alderman Repella on hiring, I understand that, you know, totally. But we hire all those extra people, and then the allocations don't come in, then what? You let them go then, or?
We have a plan. We have a plan to ramp up the vaccinations, and they will be limited-term employees. So I would expect that we might start them on fewer days per week, and as the allocations are made, then we can give them additional days. So there's quite a bit of flexibility that we're trying to operate under right now for exactly the reasons that you're talking about.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, this is, this is going to be a chore. The reports that came out today are saying, I mean, unfortunately, hopefully it doesn't happen, but they're saying the, to get everybody vaccinated in the state of Wisconsin could take till the end of the year 2022. Hopefully, that doesn't last that long. So good luck and great things that you're doing. And good luck to the, especially the Oshkosh girls and then the girls that you're going to hire on to help out administer that all these vaccines you requested, we're going to get. Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you very much.
You're back. Alderman Gotti?
Yes, thanks again, Nancy, too, and your team. You're doing a great job. But my question is, maybe just to reinstate for the Wednesday sign-up, is that by phone and computer or just by phone?
That's by phone right now. So we will have the phone lines manned for people to call in. Manasha, when, and this, thank you for reminding me this because I didn't share this bit of news, which is good. The state is putting together a registration, like an online registration. I volunteered for our health department to be a pilot, and they are meeting with us to look at what kind of requirements we have to have so that we can make this opportunity available, both by phone and by online web. So we have been selected to be a pilot. We're meeting with them Wednesday just to go through requirements for developing that system for the entire state. So I was very pleased we could be on board with that, too, because it will link right to our immunization registry. So it'll be efficient. But I also recognize that, and I'm one of them. I like to talk to a live person when I make my appointments. You know, it's, you have to try to to get people as many opportunities as we possibly can the way that they can access it.
Great. That's, thanks.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Director McKinney, just to elaborate a little more on the number of vaccines available in the entire state of Wisconsin right now, how many does Wisconsin get on a weekly basis?
So it's really, I can give you one number that sticks with me for the 65-plus age group. There are 700,000 people in that age group, and the state of Wisconsin has allocated 70,000 per week.
Seven zero.
Yep.
Seventy thousand per week.
Yep, yep. So that is a limiting factor.
And we're still working through the first, the nursing homes, the extended care facility is the nursing homes, the extended care facilities and the people who work there as well, those first groups, correct?
Yes, yes, that's called 1A. And the state did open it up to 65 plus. But it's going to take a while to get through that group of people. And of course, we want our frontline workers to be covered, our healthcare workers to be covered. So, yes, and there is, I believe there's about 400,000 healthcare workers in the state as well. So it's a heavy lift. We're all pulling together.
Yes, I was able to talk with some people over the weekend who were very grateful for the opportunity, both in Appleton and the one in Oshkosh, for their opportunity to get the first dose. They were able to get their appointments. And I think it'll be important as we get ready to ramp up to make sure that we offer every single appointment or opportunity that we can. But also, and keep reminding folks of the enormity of what we're trying to accomplish here.
I think it'll be helpful, too, if we get a one-dose vaccine. And things will go a lot faster. But you are correct because we're not just talking about 18, you know, like in our case, we looked at our population and did some calculations about an estimate. But you have to times that by two with the two available vaccines that we have. So yes, it is a heavy lift. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Taylor. Thanks, Mayor. Nancy, you said there was a phone number. Do you know what that phone number is or how people will find that number?
We'll be putting out a press release and we'll put it on Facebook. So I don't have that phone number with me. But we will make sure we send it to you all as well and get it out to the public.
Okay. And then you mentioned February 24th, 25th, 26th, a mobile unit. And is that at our senior center?
It is, actually, it is the 23rd, 24th, and 25th of February. And that is going to be at the city center. So it's going to be here with the Wisconsin Army National Guard. So the district has been very generous and has, they're moving their schedules around to accommodate this. And, you know, we know that this is successful because we've done it before for other clinics that we have. But as time goes on and we need to ramp this up, the transition, the plans to transition over to UW Oshkosh Accedis will also be important to make sure that we have it accessible and available.
Okay, when you say the city center, what is the city center?
That's where our, where the school district is. So it's 100 Main Street, right here.
City Hall, okay.
Yep, right in the conference rooms where we have the influenza vaccines.
Okay. And that phone number that you're providing, that's for those dates of 24th, 25th, 20, 23rd, 24th, 25th?
The phone number will be, we likely will not open up that particular registration right away. We will be opening up next week's available spots and the following week.
That's Sunday, Thursday?
And that will be here at 100 Main Street. So we have, we have one opportunity here next week. And I shouldn't say one, but next week, the ninth, the week of the ninth. And the following week, the week of the 16th, people will be able to register by phone.
Okay.
And then as the weeks go on and we kind of see how many available spots we have, if we can work alongside the National Guard, we'll open that up as well.
Okay. At 5:00 today, I got a phone call, left a voicemail, and I had a text that said my appointment in Appleton was canceled at the Expo Center. And I'll tell you, on that site, once you make an appointment and then that appointment is, they tell you that it's full. When you go back around, you have to type in all your information again. And that's really a lot of costly time to do that. And I was surprised by that, that you just couldn't click on the next date or go to the next date and then your information would be saved. And also on there, I noticed that there's advertisement. And I, and I don't think there should be any advertisement, any type of, whoever pays for that, I'm sure it's the federal government, somebody's paying for that website with Eventbrite. So that was my concern with that. And also, it's hard to believe, it's just been a year. And this is our deadly month, January was the deadliest month with the COVID, with the COVID situation. And over, you know, 3,000 to 4,000 people die in a day. Why, you tell us that we shouldn't be with anybody and we shouldn't have these groups. But why are we allowing meetings at City Hall and bringing people into the building that could infect our employees in the building? Why do we have these meetings?
That would not be my recommendation.
Okay, and I see on Thursday, we have a meeting with a neighborhood organization with the Park Department. Now, you could have five people, you could have 50 people. And again, why are we allowing this to bring these people during this most severe month ever into the City Hall that could possibly infect our employees? And that should be our first responsibility is to protect our employees. And I know that's what it is. And I just can't see how we can be doing these things.
Alderman Severnick.
Mayor, you're done?
No, I wasn't. I was just hearing a response.
Are you waiting a response from me because I did not set things up?
Okay, okay, Mayor, why are we allowing these things?
We are allowing meetings that are essential to happen.
Okay, but a meeting with a neighborhood organization isn't essential.
I believe that's virtual. I'm not sure. I don't find I'm being at that meeting, but I believe it was virtual from what I saw.
It's got the address right here. It says 100 Main Street at 1:00 on Thursday.
I'm not sure what that meeting is.
Well, it's, I'll read it to you. It's with the Park Department. And it's to help plan the summer programs. February 4th, 1:00 p.m., City Hall, 100 Main Street. And you can also attend virtually, too. But, you know, with our planned commission or RDA, you can't interact in those meetings virtually. And we have this technology. And again, we have to protect our employees. And our directors giving, our directors giving instructions to us, to our families, our personal life, our professional lives. And why are we allowing this?
As I said, there are some meetings that are essential that are held in person, and we will continue to hold those in person.
Well, there's nothing more essential than what's going on right now. This is the most essential to keep government moving. And we do this virtually. And there's no reason any of these other committees can do it virtually. And we shouldn't be allowing extra people in City Hall. And like I say, it's the most deadly month yet in this pandemic. And we're talking out both sides of our mouth if we're leaving this, if we're allowing this to happen. And it's no disrespect to anybody, but it's a fact. And I think if the council needs, takes action on this, fine. But here we have a director telling us our instructions. And it's not good for us or for the city to be going against our health director at this time. I'll see what anybody else has to say. Thank you.
Alderman Severnick.
Thank you, Mayor. Nancy, hopefully this isn't a dumb question, but if someone already had COVID-19, are they still encouraged to get the vaccine or not?
My, our recommendation would be that they consult with their physician. So we don't know the situation, you know, the timeline, what their underlying health conditions are.
Any indication on that yet?
I believe that they, you can be vaccinated, but they say to check with your physician to know all the particulars about the individual, the individual's health history. So, for example, we have been studying how long you're immune after you become ill. So at first it was 180, or I mean, at first it was 90 days, now it's 180 days. So I would check that timing with the physician. And also, the, any kind of underlying health conditions that that person has may affect whatever vaccination plans there are. They may, they would be best to advise them.
Okay, so you have 400,000 physicians and you're going to get 400,000 different opinions. I'm just wondering what is being said out there as far as the CDC or anyone else is? Do they ask them not to take the shot? Or, I mean, it's an easy way.
I think anybody that, anybody that has had COVID-19 has consulted with their physician, and that is what they're asking people to do. And that's one of the vaccinators, quite frankly.
All righty.
Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to quickly, Alderman Severnick, I guess I'll be the fortunate one out of this group that, because I'm on dialysis. So we're going to be getting the shot fairly soon. Even, even though I've had COVID, there's been others in dialysis that got COVID. And we are still, well, they went around and asked, you can deny taking the shot. And so I said yes, because I don't want to get that damn thing again. It was horrible, horrible. Alderman Taylors, I know Alderman Taylor with dialysis three times a week. If you have COVID, we go in, well, here, before we can enter the dialysis room, they just ask us some questions and they take our temperature. Now, if you have COVID, your temperature is not going to be where it should be. So that's a number one indicator that if you have COVID or not. But I would think, you know, in dialysis, we have to use face mask. When we're out, we have to use a face mask. So I was just wondering, Alderman Taylor, that, wouldn't you think, you know, I don't know, but would you think that those people that are going to be in that meeting would be wearing face masks? And that I, they better, and here's my recommendation, Alderman Taylor with you, is that if they're having that meeting, they better have someone there taking the temperature of everybody that walks in the door and making sure their temperature is where it's supposed to be. And if it's not, then they can't come in. So that's my take for you, Alderman Taylor. Thanks.
Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just touched on that a second. Mark, I'm not the one making the rules and I don't know what they do. But we just heard from our director that she's not recommending this. And, Air, would it be appropriate to have a motion at this time that all meetings are canceled? In-person meetings?
That's not on the agenda this evening, no.
Even though it's part of the Health Department report here?
That's not on the agenda, no. And that's the choice of the chair as to where their meeting would be held at.
Okay, I would, well, we can override chairs and the director of our health department can override chairs. And I would like this to be on, I would like this to be on our next agenda.
And remember, there are hundreds of people that come in City Hall every week to conduct business here, not just for meetings.
I know, but I've had complaints from the public about this, that they don't want to attend these meetings. And I think our, we just heard clearly from our director of health. And I have to follow those guidelines, Mayor.
So I guess I'm curious, last week you left me a message that said you couldn't get to the phone because you were at a birthday party. So if people are able to go to birthday parties, to school, to restaurants?
The three people.
I don't understand why.
With one other family member, Mayor, it was three of us, okay? We're all family members. So I think that is under the guidelines of the director.
Do they all live in the same household?
Point of order.
So anyhow.
There's a, Mayor, there's a point of order. Would you please take that?
The, the point of order can only.
I was getting off track.
The, oh.
The order is not by, it's only by the members, not by a member of the public?
That's what I was just going to say. And I thought that was you, Alderman, I mean Attorney Captain. I didn't realize that.
I thought it was the attorney calling a point of order.
I did as well, so. I guess before we end the section.
It's my wife and I and my sister. Thank you.
I guess before we end the section on the Health Department, I would like to comment a little bit. We've talked a lot about the public vaccination sites, but we haven't really commented on the preferred site for most people is your healthcare provider. And I did have, it is actually. The director and I talked about it a little bit. And I did have the opportunity this weekend to help someone get on the list through Data Care. So if you are a Data Care healthcare person, they do have a waiting list set up. And if you get your My Data Care account set up, they will email you or call you at the point when they are ready for your age classification or health classification. So that is another option besides just the public health clinics. Alderman Grady, did you have something else as well?
Well, yeah, I see Alderman Repella left. I was going to ask the question. I know they had their ad hoc committee for the downtown lighting. But I was told that was at City Hall. And Alderman Taylor, you're on the committee, so you had to be there in person.
It was both virtual and in person.
Oh, was it, was it virtual and in person?
Yes.
Okay, so just stating.
Did you have something else, Alderman Taylor?
I just want to say that meeting's virtual. There are some people that show up at that meeting, that City Hall. And Mayor, I'd like this to be on the agenda for the next meeting. Thank you, with the recommendations from our health director.
Seeing no further discussion, we'll move on to the minutes and communications. Do we have a motion? You got to turn your mic on, Stan.
But you got recognized.
Okay.
So, okay, I guess you recognized me. Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we receive Minutes A through G and Communication E.
Second. There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I am, I am discussing. Thank you, Mayor. I would like to go to letter F. And letter F is the Nina Minasha Fire Rescue Joint Finance and Personnel Committee meeting minutes. And I was reading this over and over. And there's been discussion in the past about this. And I see that Alderman Severnick was opposed to part of this. And I see that he voted nay. So I was wondering if I may ask Alder Severnick why he voted nay? Is that hot? Okay. Is that, okay.
Are you talking about the training?
Yes.
Is that what you're talking about, Mayor?
Yes.
That's on the consent agenda as well.
You want to take it up there?
We can talk about the consent agenda first.
Okay.
Yeah, we should go with the item itself, so.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Are there any opposed? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to have some items separated? We'll separate item four.
Mayor, public comments?
Oh, sorry. Item G, public comments. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak at this time?
Sandra DeBill Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I do notice that there's two callers. If either one of them would like to speak, I can wait my turn. Otherwise, I will go on. First of all, I do apologize for, I was the one that called the point of order. I thought the mayor was getting off track by bringing up Alderman Taylor's personal life. So anyhow, on to what I have to say. First of all, again, to repeat myself about the fourth time, I am again requesting, a request for proposals be solicited for legal services for the city of Minasha prior to the reappointment of the attorney come April. Secondly, regarding the health of the COVID response plan and the report from Nancy from the Minasha Health Department, I appreciate Nancy's diligence and hard work and her staff. So this is not any reflection on her. But in general, I am very disappointed that the city of Minasha, that does provide its own health department, has appeared to have no stronger response to the COVID vaccination than any other community nearby that doesn't have a health department. So I actually question the number, the amount of dollars that we spend, whether it's worth it. Just like having the senior center that's been closed and why if they're going to be having a clinic, why it isn't held at a vacant senior center, that you don't have to worry about the school district employees and all these other employees coming through when it could be confined to that one vacant building that's being unused. Anyone who attempted to try to make an appointment and I tried to assist two individuals and it was a nightmare. First of all, it is geared currently to those 65 and older. That is most likely the category of candidates who are not literate when it comes to computers or access to computers. They don't have computers. They don't understand it. And that was the only way you can make an appointment via Appleton or Oshkosh. And yet we are here in Minasha with the Health Department and had no access. I'm happy to hear that there will be one coming up, but this needs to be advertised to the general public via radio, newspaper, and not just on Facebook, because the same individuals are not linked in. Okay, enough about that. So I do question it. I really do, I'm beginning to question the legitimacy of having a health department when we could just contract with the county. Then, to piggyback on what Alderman Taylor said, and I had no idea he was going to say this, but there are two meetings tomorrow, a Plan Commission meeting and a Redevelopment Authority meeting. Neither one of those give the option of being allowed to attend virtually. They're both in person. Additionally, the Plan Commission is having a public hearing that is forcing people from the public to come to City Hall. This is extremely unfortunate. And for the mayor to say it's up to the chairperson, I question whether he even communicated with the chairpersons that there is a necessity while the city of Minasha is still at, at a very high level according to Nancy, that the option of virtual meetings is not provided. Anything you can see on your computer, it's a site plan. Furthermore, speaking of the Plan Commission meeting, and I will be bringing this up tomorrow, the public hearing is in violation of State Stat 985 and Stats 990-01, because it does not, even though they are calling this informal, a formal public hearing requires two weeks' notification. A week is defined as seven days per state statutes. It was published Saturday. Saturday is not included in the count. The day of publication is not included in the count. Therefore, Tuesday leaves a three-day notice for a public hearing, which is a violation. So that public hearing should not be taking place. I also question, because this was mailed to property owners within 100 feet of the site, if they received their notice seven days prior to the meeting. I doubt it. I encourage, if it was virtually, that all of you attend both the Plan Commission and the RDA, because the RDA has an amendment to the purchase agreement with YBR Properties. Yet at the Plan Commission, YBR Properties apparently is called Bonta One LLC. So unless we have different developers, they changed their name again. And there, we have, there's a, a mess. This is, this is, this is about the fourth time I think they changed the name. So I'm going to have clarification on that one. So I will be attending both of those, but I'm putting my health at risk by doing so. Thank you, Mayor Murkis. Now, speaking of which, now on the agenda, there is, while I'm on a roll, while I really appreciate what Alderman Nichols does to the community, I am adamantly opposed to her amendment to R2-21 to pay our employees to get the COVID vaccine. It's a luxury at this point to be able to get that vaccine. And apparently she feels we have to pay our employees to get it. I think that's ludicrous. I ask that that not be added. I'm actually not even in favor of people getting extended vacation when there is no proof that they got it while doing the job. Because from personal experience, a few weeks ago, I witnessed two officers in front of my house who had apprehended an individual under the influence, and neither one wore a mask, but they were with that individual for over an hour. A week after that, a detective actually came to my door with another incident that happened in my wonderful neighborhood that community development doesn't seem to care about without a mask. So I would like to know if there's a mandate on masks for city employees when they're out dealing with the public? Because if not, why are we willing to pay them to get a vaccination if they don't really care to wear a mask? Then, I'll try to calm down a little bit. On the check register, there are three checks I'm curious about. Page four, it says an IT Incident Response, $25,000. At one time I heard that the city had a computer malfunction and all the computers were down. I would like a report on that, whether that was a hack where our systems compromised? Or was this just a computer glitch? I think a report should be done, and especially where the $25,000, what that is allocated to, and if that was in the budget. On page five is a payment to the PJC Group LLC for $16,293.56. It's for their tip incentive. This tip was created in 2007. That's over 13 years we've been paying them an incentive. At what point are we fulfilled our obligation? I would like the mayor to invite these gentlemen to the council to give a presentation on what activities they have been trying to do to encourage development at that site, considering it's been sitting vacant that long and it's dependent upon them to improve that site for us to improve the rest of the Bonta and portal. Then, on page six, is also another tip incentive for $17,008.53, the Bertrand Dental, that I'm assuming they had to, by December 31st, be completely operational. I went past there today. The parking lot had overfilled onto the street. So I'm assuming they are fulfilled their obligation, but I want to question that. And I also want to question if anything is being withheld from this increment to ensure that the site plan is fulfilled when the spring comes and it is able to plant plantings. Then, as far as the landmarks facade, I'm opposed to paying this amount that was held due to the fact that community development should have screened this prior to it being on the agenda. As is noted in the municipal code, it is up to the Community Development Director to screen such things. Apparently, he didn't do that, so it ended up on the agenda and the Landmarks Commission went ahead and passed it. So this one I throw on his lap. Then, as far as, oh, I could go on. I won't. Really short, though. There is an appointment, and I am all in favor of this person being appointed to the Library Board. But I, again, would ask that the mayor post on the website or post somewhere very visible all opportunities for the public to join committees. What happens now is that the mayor goes and seeks out someone that he likes, not someone that actually wants to volunteer their time. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on.
Mayor, Mayor.
Hey, Mayor.
Could I, could I ask, I, I didn't get, I didn't get it from Sandra that $25,000, what, what?
We didn't need to talk about that when we get, when we get to that point, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor, I just had a question from Nancy. Does, is that Minasha, Minasha citizens only that can get that shot in Minasha?
This isn't the time to be discussing that, James. We're past.
Mayor, James, James Taylor, 340 Broad Street.
James, you can speak. James.
I can too.
No, you are a member of the board at this point.
I can't hold the microphone.
And you cannot do that. We have that in the rules. We have that in the rules.
I just asked Nancy to answer that question.
We have that in the rules, Mr. Taylor. We're moving on to the consent agenda. You can call her if you want to ask more questions.
Can you answer that?
So we're moving on to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to have?
I would like to see those rules, Mayor.
You have a copy of the rules. Does anyone wish to have any items separated other than item four, Alderman Severnick?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to go through the whole litany, so.
Okay.
At this time, Mayor, I'd like to, for us to approve the common council minutes of 11821.
So a second. So a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Seeing none, we'll move on to item two. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mayor. I'll make the motion to accept the change orders for Myron Construction Company, Inc. for Public Works Facility Construction Project. That's an add of $10,408.66. That's change order number 15.
I'll second that, Mayor.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
I would like to hear about the change. I would like to hear from the Director on the change order, Mayor.
Okay. I believe we talked about this in committee. Adam, do you want to go through them again?
Adam here? Adam, you out there?
Yeah, he just turned his light on.
Okay.
I am. You got to give me a moment here, quick. I'm coming. So the, there's four items, four PCI items. One of them was to add an additional inch and one-half inch water supply on the far end of the building. That was $2,500. That was a, a request that we made once we started moving equipment in there for operational efficiencies. Then there's a, a deduct or an add back to the contingency for the diffuser credit, which was with some, when we made some changes in the vehicle storage on the ductwork, we were concerned that we would need to add some diffusers. It turned out that we did not, so we got a credit for them back. One of the items for $1,130 was ice and water shield and a weatherproof or weather tight access door on the sign. Originally, in the design of the building, the sign was not to be lit. We since changed that, so we had to provide access for the drivers for the LED lights. And then there's a, there was like three or four items HVAC related. Two of the major items were there were two unit heaters in the vehicle maintenance area that were about like nine feet off the ground outside of the door, but, but not too far away from the edge that we were concerned that maybe either the wings on some of our equipment or the plow markers on some of our equipment might come in contact with them. So we asked that, we raised those up. In the vehicle storage area, we have a, a tool room. In order for us to store gasoline-powered equipment in that tool room, we needed to have a spark-resistant heat source. Original plan had called for an electric heater, which we had to remove or not install. And then we had to provide heat through a forced air fan or a forced air rooftop unit in the vehicle storage area. So we had to add some ductwork there. And that was $7,137. And that's the total of the $10,408 for those four items.
Is there any additional questions? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Tom Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady.
Aye.
Alderman Repella.
Aye.
Alderman Nichol.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Severnick.
Aye.
Alderman Langdon.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Motion carries on roll call eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item three?
Yes, Mayor, I'll make the motion. But before I make the motion, I'd like to comment that we have committees. That's why we have committees. And, and staff provided an overview of the change orders and commented on the four construction, oh, that's the last. Anyway, we have committees. And this next one that we're going to be voting on was in committee. And I want to make, say that motion carried on roll call eight zero. So for me, I don't, there should not be any questions. And that's what we have committees for. So I just wanted to say that. All right. I will make the motion to accept the payment for Myron Construction Company, Public Works Facility Construction Project, $221,963.53, payment number 10.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion? Alderman Nichols, did you have a discussion?
No.
Okay. I saw you turn on your light a little while earlier, so I wasn't sure.
Mayor.
Alderman Taylor?
Is that in our rule stool that we can't ask questions?
No, there's no. No, there's nothing in the rules that you can't ask questions.
Thank you.
That's why I always make sure.
Then, um, I'll maybe talk to the mayor, we'll get rid of committees, um, but that, that, that's what they're for.
Okay.
She should ask the questions and that, because we waste time.
Seeing no further discussion than about the mo, item at hand, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Tom Grotty?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grotty?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichol?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
We have a motion for item four. Is that a, a yes, Ann, or Alderman Repella? Did you wanna make this, did you wanna make the motion? No?
I can make the motion. I can make the motion for the, um, the combined recruit class memorandum of understanding with Nina Manashe Fire and Rescue, the Oshkosh Fire Department, and the Grand Chute Fire Department.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
So motion and a second. Is there discussion?
I have discussion. So this is where, yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is where I'd like to ask Alderman Sevenick to explain, um, his voting nay for this. Thank you.
Alderman Seven, would you wanna comment?
Sure. Um, during the, uh, meeting, uh, I have very strong opinions. Obviously, everyone here knows of sharing our services with villages and towns. And here's another example, where we have spent a lot of money on this particular setup facility. Actually, I forget the dollar amount. It was last year, I think we stuck another twenty thousand dollars or so. I don't know, Mayor, if you remember that dollar amount or not. But, uh, I don't see where this really benefits us, other than getting another recruitment, uh, instructor. Uh, we're, we're training new people for Grand Chute that serves us absolutely no purpose whatsoever. But yet, let's let them use our facility that basically Nina originally paid for, and then now we share, and we stuck additional dollars into. And my feeling is, is they wanna be big boys, they need to start paying up. So if they want a facility, they should build one themselves. Or there's the, I think, um, maybe James could help me with this one. Um, Fox Valley Tech apparently spent uh, hundreds of thousands of dollars on a facility out there for firefighter training, fi- fighting training, and, um, we built this facility for our folks, and I understand its, its importance. I recently have heard from uh, firefighters that when we call in from villages and townships, we have a, a, a smaller skill set that's coming into our community. That could be dangerous for us. Um, I don't like that either. Uh, this was designed to facilitate and help our firefighters and not outside townships, villages, that wanna, again, use our services like they continue to do. We build it, they use it. That's all. And I'm just tired of it. You all know my opinion about that, and I thought, you know what? I'm gonna have to put up or shut up, so I decided to vote no.
Would you have something else to?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanna comment on Alderman Sevenick. I totally get where you're coming from. I understand the sharing costs and reciprocity and all these other things that we do for all the townships and cities, but when I look at the safety and the well-being of individuals and the, and the firefighters, police force, whomever it may be, whoever's paying it, I know that we are training them, but we are charging them back. They are paying for the portions of the training. But safety and health is so important, and it's a tough one, but I, you know, I gotta vote with, hey, what's best for the actual person, and, and that's where my alliance lies.
Alderman Seven?
I totally agree with, uh, what Ted is saying. It's just that, again, I can't emphasize enough, this is our facility, and we're allowing another municipality to come in again and use it. A- and the I and other taxpayers paid for that facility, not anyone in the town of Grand Chute. Or, once we do this, now it becomes Harrison, and now it comes Fox Crossing. I'm not in favor of that. That's my opinion, and I hope people can respect that.
Alderman Langdon?
Hey, Mayor. So, yeah, I, I, I know where this is going. I think, uh, a, a, a couple other Aldermen know where this is going. And, um, I wanted Alderman Sevenick to explain so, uh, on TV, so everybody knows, and I'll be voting nay for this also. Thank you.
Alderman Nichol?
Thank you, Mayor. Is Chief Clone on tonight? There he is. Uh, Chief Clone, um, can you tell us a little bit more about Grand Chute's Fire Department and how, um, it operates? We can't hear you. Barely. Can you turn up the volume?
He can hear you. Just slightly. You need to turn the volume up.
Well, I, I can answer my own question. I just think sometimes it's better to hear it from the chief, um. Uh, and this was addressed at the meeting as well, so the folks that attended the committee meeting, um, can attest to this. Even though the town of Grand Chute, um, is still a township, they do have a professional, full-time career fire department. Um, and so that, to me, is the difference maker in this decision to share. I know that they're still a township, uh, but they do have a fire department that is similar, um, in operations to ours. And I don't know if Chief, if we can hear Chief Clone yet, but will they be sharing in the cost of maintaining the training facility? Yes, okay. Um.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can. But now you're making calls up.
I'm on my phone.
Everyone else needs to turn their mic off.
It's actually Kevin's mic that's the problem.
He's gotta turn his computer off.
There, how's that?
On another row.
Perfect.
Okay, sorry about that. So, yes, Grand Chute is a full-time fire department. They no longer have paid-on calls or volunteers. It's a career department. Um, they're adding nine new firefighters this spring, um, as part of, um, their effort to go completely full-time. And so, I know, I understand also what Alderman Sevenick is saying. Um, some of the things that, that are beneficial with the three of us is that each, each department is gonna be offering two to three instructors, so um, we'll have more instructors, um, on the ground, on the training ground. And versus if it was just us, we'd have Assistant Chief Peglow with our eight firefighters. Um, possibly an engine company, but then we have to take them out of service to do the training. So this way, this training together offers not having to pull any engine or ladder companies out of service to do the training with our eight new firefighters. The other thing is that it's efficient, in that if it was just Chief Peglow training our eight firefighters, they're not gonna be able to run through as many evolutions as they are with, with the group. And the reason is, is because if Chief Peglow's working with the eight, they run through a scenario, and then the other, whatever, four firefighters are, um, waiting. They have to take everything down, reset everything back up. It just takes longer. Where they have broken down, um, from last year when we did it with Oshkosh, they have broken down into groups of three or four, so that when one group is going through, one group is resting, one group is gonna, is gonna set everything back up, and it's just a big rotation. So they're gonna be able to get more evolutions of their training in, um, versus if we're just doing it by ourselves. The other thing is that each, each department is offering, has something a little bit to offer. So the city of Oshkosh also has a new, um, training, um, prop that they have put in last fall, so they are gonna spend a couple days down in Oshkosh. Um, and then, of course, we have our facility. And Grand Chute is actually gonna send an engine and a ladder, so that we do not have to utilize, again, pulling any of our units out of service to utilize, um, water flow or whatever they're, they're doing. They're gonna use it on, uh, Grand Chute's apparatus. Um, and then, Oshkosh also is offering, they're gonna do the EMS training, because they are paramedics, and they have a chief that is, uh, a, a trained instructor, so, um, he's gonna be teaching the three groups, uh, the EMS portion of their, um, of their class. So there is some benefits, and yes, at the end, the costs are all divvied up amongst the three um, departments and, um, cost shared. So that is, uh, I think, oh, and the last thing is too, is that, uh, Chief Peglow then, if there's something that comes up, he's able to, um, spend time. So they, they've, the instructors have figured that if, if they needed to, could take off, like, one day during each week, um, to take care of other business within the department. Maybe it's another training with the, with the career guys, with the full-time guys that are working, um, or if they have a meeting, they're able to do that. So just being able to, um, have the other instructors, and all the instructors that are gonna be at the um, academy are, are instructors at the tech as well, so, um, we're getting some quality instructors teaching our new firefighters.
And how many times a year does this happen, Chief Clone?
Just once.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Seven?
Yeah, it, it's not like just one day, though. It's, it's several weeks, so just, so that's understood.
Correct. It's a five-week class.
As far as the cost sharing, maybe the cost sharing in running this service, but there isn't cost sharing in what we paid for, for the facility. Such as, like, the sewage treatment plant that we here in Nina Manashe built, and then uh, Fox Crossing and Harrison built new homes, and we've got the infrastructure now, so let's use your facility. They don't have a full-time fire department. They just hired a full-time fire department that's not fully trained. And so what we're doing is helping to train them, to make them be better firefighters. I don't have a problem with that. My problem is, we're always on the short end of the stick here. We put, we put, we do all our things, and then we ask, and then all of a sudden, other communities wanna come in and share what we have, and we pay for it. But then, oh, you guys have the highest taxes. That is why we have the highest taxes, because of those kinds of things. So.
Alderman Grotty?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, it's probably a strange question, but dealing with a small community that's so tight-knit, all their Fox Crossing, Grand Chute, Nina, Manashe, isn't it beneficiary for all of these people to be trained somewhat the same? Because it's a collaboration. We just had a huge fire down the street here at Jefferson Apartments. There was, I don't, I think there were like seven trucks, and they came from all different Clayton, I think, Town Harrison. I'm not sure who all was there, but I, I think it's just a good civic kumbaya duty to be collaborative on all of this. I mean, you gotta put the torch down somewhere, and I, I think it's time.
And I don't disagree with you, Tom, on, on anything that you said there, or what the chief said. Again, I'm just emphasizing, we always pay for everything, and then we play kumbaya and let's share, so that we can have a better community out there. Just like, hey, you know what? Let's get along with each other. Let's have boundary agreements. So we have boundary agreements, and what happens? We get the short end of that stick.
Okay, seeing no further.
I got one.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, so Chief Clone, so how did we handle fires in, um, when did, when did Nina Manashe converge, first of all?
Two thousand and three.
So two thousand and three to tonight, how did we handle fires? By ourselves?
Well, we No, we would call mutual aid, but since then, there is the mutual aid box alarm system now that we use, so it's a little different than mutual aid, but it's, it's, it's similar, um, in that we know which departments we would call, obviously our neighbors, but it's just a different arrangement where, um, we can predetermine who we need based on the type of fire or equipment that's requested.
Uh, okay, yeah, I don't, I, no, I don't wanna ask him that.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, if we built a new facility, uh, this training tower, uh, what would that cost? Approximately?
Um, it, it, again, it depends on what you have within the tower, but they're in the one fifty, hundred fifty thousand range, probably, depending on how many stories and what, if you have burned buildings in it, or whatever you all the bells and whistles, but they're in the one fifty thousand range.
Okay, and, uh, so it's not out of anybody's reach to build a facility, and the taxpayers of the tri-county area has spent, it was a thirty million dollar referendum, and part of that was the fire training center. Uh, a brand-new state-of-the-art, uh, even have a, a DC nine out there, an airplane out there to train on. And, uh, maybe, uh, maybe their training center is better than ours, uh, to, to train in. And certainly, it's open to these other communities, and, um, it's kind of odd that they'd be coming to Manashe here and saying, we wanna train with you. Alderman Sevenick was right. It is a five-week course, eight hours a day. Uh, that's a lot of people. And, uh, now we got three departments in there instead of one department. If you think of the wear and tear on it, then, uh, and I was thinking about, we do have the mutual aid, and I don't see any safety issue at all for the city of Manashe employees. We provide them with the best equipment, the best, uh, training centers, and there is no safety issue for our employees. Maybe there is for other departments, but certainly not ours. You know, every time we expand or do something, everybody else wants to use it. You look at the, the cost of, uh, of the dive te, dive team, what that cost us to start with, and here we go over to Audi Gaming County, we go over to High Cliff. Yeah, it's nice that we save people's lives, but it comes at a cost. Yeah, it's nice that we save people's lives, but it comes at a cost. Alderman Sevenek hit it right on the right, hit the nail right on the head. It's a cost. And then they want to use that cost against us. He wants us to spend the money. And then what do they do? High taxes, high taxes. We hear it all the time. And that that's the problem. That's where the rubber meets the road. And they use it as a they weaponize it and use it as a tool with the real estate people. And 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 it costs us uh negative uh uh a negative image. And also it it puts us in a in a bad predicament. Even though it's not apples to apples or oranges, we do a lot of things that these other cities don't do. That 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 they get put on their taxes and we don't. So that that's what the the whole issue here is. And uh I'm satisfied that we take care of our employees and we always have. Uh I look at kind of uh, the other day we had a snowstorm. I go out my driveway, my neighbor's not on either side. I usually do it. Some days I feel better. I'll go all the way down to the corner to six houses, come back. And I I kind of laugh to myself, you know, if I would do that all the time. Uh I'd wear out my snow blower six times sooner than if I just did my property. And what would that cost me? And would those neighbors come in and help me replace that snow blower? No. And uh we have to we have to provide an engine or a quint truck for these for this for this training. And we all know that a ladder truck's over a million dollars now. And the pumpers are over a half million dollars now. And for a city of seventeen thousand people, that's a lot of money. Now we have to use our engines uh at this training facility, but wear and tear on those. But wear and tear on our training facility. And as it states right here in this document, that. They will pay a stipend of the electricity and heating of the facility, a stipend. Well, look what this facility costs us. And it's all about dollars and there's very few of them to go around. And pretty soon, if we're gonna have to cut back, then it's gonna impact our people, our safety of our employees. I appreciate the the mutual aid that's out there. But Fox Valley Tech has a has a training center. And they're coming to us. Why? Because the cost is far less than going to Fox Valley Technical Fire Training Service. That's why they're coming here and putting wear and tear on our equipment, our trucks, our facility for what? Go out and get your own facility or they should really step up and pay a a a nominal fee to use this facility. Uh so we don't have to, when we have to fix it, then we have to fix it. And uh it 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 goes back again to what Alderman Sevenek said. It all comes down to to dollars and common sense.
Thank you, Alderman Grady.
Thank you. Um again, I'll re- re- reiterate the fact that it's not just our machines that are being used. Fire Chief Clone mentioned that they share other, they share other machines. It's not just us. We do charge them for for the five-week program. Maybe we'll have to look at what we do charge them next year or the year after. Maybe it's not divided by three, maybe it's a different formula. But it's still, it it's a win-win. I think that if you have trained individuals and if I'm a firefighter, I'm a young kid, I'm going to this training class, I go, oh, I I'm in Grand Shoot. But my gosh, Nina Minasha, they gotta put together. I might want to quit my job there and work for their fire department. So there's other intangibles, but I understand Alderman Taylor, Alderman Sevenek, your points. But I don't know, it's 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 safety. Oh, it's not.
Alderman Repello?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Chief Chief Kevin, um down the street from my house, there was a garage fire just last week, two weeks ago. And there was multiple, multiple um entities. They are putting out that garage fire. It was an unattached garage fire. Um. What, how many other companies were called in to put out that fire?
We had nobody else there from another community. But while we were there, at the same time, we had a fire on Arthur Street. So some of the companies from that fire left to go to Arthur Street. And so there was nobody else from another department at the Plank Road Fire.
So it was all handled by Minasha uh Minasha Fire Engines?
Correct, three engines and a ladder.
Well, okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Alderman Taylor?
Uh Chief, when you say we're using the facility, we gotta take an engine out of service. We just heard that there was another fire and we responded. Uh how long does it take to disconnect at that facility and get that engine back on the road?
It just depends on what type of training they're doing. But if they were in full SCBA's hauling hose lines into a building or doing something inside the building. It's gonna take a good five minutes probably to get disconnected. Um get stuff back on the truck that's needed and, you know, get the firefighters back on and um and headed out. So I would say probably five minutes or so.
Thank you.
Depend and it depends on where the call is too. It depends on what, you know, side of the city that they're needed. So obviously, if it's close, then, you know, having a delay of of a couple of minutes probably isn't too terrible. But if it's across town, well, then then that is a, you know, a larger delay.
Okay, but we have four stations, right?
We do, yep.
Okay, um. Everybody knows that I follow safety more than anybody. I got a forty-three-year career with it. And if I thought for a minute, there was one little bit of a safety issue here for our. In fact, we've gone so far over, we we have our own facility. So we've taken care of our safety issue on that. Now we have to share with two other departments with with twice the amount of stress and 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 uh and uh wear and tear on this property. And we're not gonna come out on the other side. And we gotta use an engineer, you gotta run that engine, run those pumps. And it's wear and tear on the facility, it's wear and tear on our vehicles. And that comes down to dollars. And Grant Shoot has never done anything for us before. And all of a sudden now they want to come in in their facilities, I believe is in Grant Shoot. The the Fox Valley Tech facility. And uh they should be taking advantage of that. But instead, we're gonna be taking advantage of our taxpayers and our equipment and and our building. And it all comes down to dollars, just like running this snow blower up and down your whole block. It's gonna wear out a lot faster and that engine's gonna wear out faster and so is that facility. And and again, it's all dollars, it's not safety.
Alderman Langdon?
Thank you, Mayor. Um uh Kevin, kind of, um this is just um um wondering. Um you brought it up, um I don't know if we if your firefighters can. But you mentioned about about five minutes, maybe it would take them to pull out and go to another fire. Do you guys or do they or do you guys have ever trained on that? Just curiosity.
Uh we, it happens pretty frequently where they're training and they get a call or they're on a call and then another one comes in. So yes, it does happen. It happens a fair amount of time.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, could you review what is um all included in the cost-sharing arrangement?
Um, the cost share is is really the the items that, well, if there's anything broke. Um that is shared. And then if um it's really the the stuff that we use for the burning or the materials that we use for uh vehicle extrication or um the locks and stuff that we use for um our gaining of access into buildings, that type of thing. So more more like the consumable type um items.
What about for the training facility itself?
Yes, whatever. So they figure out, they're able to figure out the the total days that were there. And it's not on that specific site every single day for five weeks. So we're gonna be, you know, bouncing around to different uh different uh areas with uh water rescue. And like I said, Oshkosh has their um new prop that they have. So they'll be down there for three or four days. Um so it's not there every single day for five weeks. But I do believe they take a look at um any type of of uh electricity or anything that is used there. So um have it metered and whatever. So it's it it's really more of the consumables.
And the general maintenance of the facility?
Yeah, so the general maintenance of it is most of the, most of it is done by, actually Chief Peglow has done a lot of maintenance on his own with just a little bit. You know, the mo- the building is metal, so there isn't a lot that can be broken there. Um we replaced the in the burn, there's one room in the lower level that is a burn room. And so we replaced the burn panels in there. And that was done about four years ago, three years ago. Um and they hadn't been replaced since it was built in the early nineties. So um but our our, we ordered them and then our staff put them in there. So really, the maintenance has been on crews, a little bit of painting here and there. Um but like I said, the building is all metal. There's really um no wood in the building except for a hose maze that our crews built probably about ten years ago or something like that. So um but that's it. There's really not a lot of maintenance to the building.
Is but is our training facility that we have, that building, used in this training program?
Yes, yes, it is.
So um I, you're you're recalling a few years ago when we talked about doing some repairs to that facility that were in our budget. And so I I guess my question is, do these other departments share now in that cost going forward?
They they have not shared well, and we only did it one year last year with Oshkosh. So the the maintenance that we did a few years ago was added the stairs uh on outside stairwell to the building. And that cost was shared by the Nina Police Department um for their training there as well. So that part was shared, a shared cost with the police department. And that's the only other maintenance we've done there is the painting of some of the metal panels for the windows because they were starting to rust. But um everything else, um the updating of it has been just the fire panels. And that was before I was chief, so about four years ago, five years ago.
So is that something, the replacement of those sorts of parts? Is that something that can be worked into um a future memorandum of understanding?
Absolutely. We could we could figure out what that cost is and put that in there, sure.
How long is this memorandum of understanding good for?
Just for this, just for this uh academy.
Okay. All right. I think that would be helpful going forward to incorporate uh those costs or to see if there's um a way to establish a fee to help uh cover those costs since other departments are using that as part of their training exercises.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you. Chief, uh what do those panels cost?
I I honestly do not know. I can I can get a cost for you. Like I said, I think they were changed over right before I became chief. I know uh when Chief Sippan was here, he was the one that ordered them and then he actually put them in himself. So um I would have to check to see what those panels are and I can do that. I can check tomorrow and shoot you out an email, but I don't know offhand.
And I think it was our last meeting, it was a meeting before. Uh we weren't gonna order any wood because of uh COVID. There wasn't any uh supply of uh timber available. And what was that timber for?
So that was, the timber was for this uh stairwell and a platform that's on top of our um confined space training prop that um we did last year. So that was part of the prop. But the wood, like I said, the wood is like four times as expensive when we first got the quote for it. So um that's.
Is that part of this facility?
It is, yes.
Okay, and uh with the four times the cost, what is that gonna cost right now?
Well, we had, I believe we had like, I want to say like twelve. I can't remember what we carried, over eight thousand or ten thousand. Um but, you know, when we bid it, the sheet of plywood was, you know, probably twelve dollars. And now it's like thirty-six or forty dollars a sheet. So um and then green treated lumber, we couldn't find. It was just wasn't anywhere around. So um again, that was three times the cost where it was probably thirty bucks a post or whatever that we, that was what was needed. So um that's why we just held it over to see if we could uh wait for the cost to come down.
So certainly uh there is a, there is cost on this facility. And to build one is a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And, you know, I think uh this takes away from our guys' time. If you've got two other departments here and you're waiting for the next, the next thing to do or next shift to do. Now you're back in line and to me, I think it costs our department uh time uh that they have to wait for this uh this uh for other departments uh in the training process. And um uh does the water use, is there much water use? And uh does that uh water drain into our sewer system?
There is water usage out there and it does drain into the sewer. Um but what water usage is of course reported to the utility, whatever they use for the day. So yes.
Okay, so there's other related costs here. And to me, the the stipend uh uh cost or the what they're eligible to pay that that stipend uh is to me isn't uh doesn't cover our cost. And also for us to have an engine on site, a quint or another engine and using those pumps, using that mach- that machine to to run this operation uh isn't cost-effective for us either. So at a at a cost-effective uh standard, uh we come out losing on this. And uh I'm gonna vote against it.
Okay, seeing no more discussion, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Hi.
Alderman Repella?
Hey.
Alderman Nichols?
Hi.
Alderman Taylor?
Hey.
Alderman Sevenek?
No.
Alderman Langdon?
Can't hear you.
Mark, you didn't have your mic on.
Hey.
Was that a name?
Name, yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Hi.
The mayor will vote aye as well.
That was an aye?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries on roll call five-four.
We have a motion for item five.
I just wondering, Mayor, you broke the tie then, correct?
I did, yes.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Thank you. I didn't hear, I didn't hear the count uh four to four. You just, so thank you.
I had a feeling it was gonna be four to four.
Yes, I understood it. Uh it appears we have a tie. Sorry about that.
Is there a motion for item five? Alderman Grady?
Yes, I'd like to forward to council to accept the recommended revisions to appendix O. The police uh addendum as outlined in the memo. One, add four dollars per hour to the overtime rate supervisory lieutenants. Two, modify the minimum hours for count time for supervised lieutenants. And three, change the payout date for the physical fitness incentive to November.
Is there a second?
Second.
So motion is second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenek?
That was just court time.
Modified the minimum hours for court time? Any other discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Yes, thank you. Uh, Chief Saika, for the physical fitness incentive, is that, um, are all eligible? Uh, excuse me, are all officers eligible for that incentive?
Yes. That's the short answer. Um, it replaces the old vest incentive. So for the newer officers after hired, I don't have the date exactly in front of me, they no longer have the vest incentive. So they can choose to do the physical fitness incentive or they can get nothing.
Thank you.
But.
Alderman Repella.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh.
Oh. You were just waiting to vote, huh? Seeing no one else, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Tom Gotti.
Hi.
Alderman Ted Gotti.
Hi.
Alderman Repella.
Saika took back, uh, aye.
Alderman Nichols.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Alderman Sevigny.
Hi.
Alderman Langdon.
Hi.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Motion carries on roll call eight zero.
Item J is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of January fifteenth through January twenty eighth, 2021 in the amount of nine hundred eighty six thousand, eight hundred forty dollars and thirty seven cents.
Second.
So motion is second. Is there any discussion? Did you have a discussion, Mark? No?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, I always want to call her Alderman. Sandra Taylor had asked a couple of questions, so I'll ask them for her if Jennifer is available. Jennifer's, her first one was the, uh, that 25,000, uh, from the IT. Can you, uh, address her question on that?
I can. So in December, no, in December, we, um, had to have our network taken down due to the fact that it was compromised. Um, I, I don't have any report to be able to share at this time. But we did file an insurance claim, so this is our deductible, um, for that insurance claim.
Okay. The other one was, uh, the TIV, uh, for 16,000, the incentive for PG and.
PJAC group?
Yes.
Yeah, we have been making payments. I think the first one was in 2010. So it looks like, um, next year should just about take care of that 175,000 dollar grant. Um, there'll be a little bit that looks like it would go into year 2023, and then that will be satisfied.
Okay. And then, um, like, the her other one was about the Burton Dental for the seventeen. And, uh, and I am happy to see that there, uh, there, it appears as though they're in full operations. I've noticed several cars there and, um, things seem to be working out. But if you want to address that in any way, I, I do believe that they were in compliance unless Sam wants to jump in.
Oh, they weren't.
Go, go ahead, Sam.
So per the First Amendment Development Agreement, uh, amended to the original development agreement with Burton Dental, uh, we did allow for that first payment continued upon them being actively within the facility before the end of 2020. Uh, we did recognize that there was some landscaping that, that was removed that needed to be reinstalled. Um, so that is again, probably continued upon the 2021 or the November first of 2021 payment. So again, we have been in conversation slightly with them and we'll be working with them as the, uh, spring, um, comes into play and to get that landscaping placed in and we will revisit that in the fall.
Thank you, Sam. Hopefully, uh, Sandra, those were answered for you. I think there was one more. Nope, that was it. Thank you. I didn't have any because I usually call Jennifer ahead of time.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Tom Gotti.
Hi.
Alderman Ted Gotti.
Hi.
Alderman Repella.
Hi.
Alderman Nichols.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Alderman Sevigny.
Hi.
Alderman Langdon.
Hi.
Alderman Schmidt.
Hi.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item two is the beverage operators licenses. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2019 through 2021 licensing period as listed under approved in the clerk's memo dated January twenty eighth, 2021.
Is there a second? Aye. So motion is a second by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Did you have discussion, Randy?
No, no, that's it. I'm just waving it back.
If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Tom Gotti.
Hi.
Alderman Ted Gotti.
Hi.
Alderman Repella.
Hi.
Alderman Nichols.
Hi.
Alderman Taylor.
Hi.
Alderman Sevigny.
Hi.
Alderman Langdon.
Hi.
Alderman Schmidt.
Hi.
Motion carries eight zero.
Who did we lose? Oh, okay. All of a sudden I lost a square. I wasn't sure what happened. Item three is a DHS grant. Do we have a motion? Would you like to hear from Director McKinney first? Alderman Nichols?
Uh, I can make the motion and then we'll hear from Director McKinney.
Go ahead.
Uh, move to approve the request to receive and spend Wisconsin DHS DPH ELC enhancing detection supplemental funds in the amount of three hundred thirty eight thousand, four hundred dollars for Manassia COVID nineteen vaccination efforts.
Is there a second? There's a motion in a second. Uh, Director McKinney, would you like to?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Yep, we're, we're really pleased to let you know that we've been allocated not only what the one hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred dollars for testing and for contact tracing that will have to continue through the pandemic, but also now the opportunity to receive three hundred and thirty eight thousand, eight hundred dollars from, uh, through October thirty first, two thousand twenty-two. The way we're spending, planning to spend these funds are to hire up vaccination teams, um, to scale up our efforts for general public vaccination. Um, as you know, we are, um, able to as soon as possible begin working on, um, not only our one A group frontline healthcare providers, police, fire, and long-term care facilities and residents, their workers and residents, but also sixty-five plus. And this is a very large group, uh, to scale up these operations and to do it really efficiently. We need to bring on some more registered nurses and some clerks to assist us. Uh, so we will, um, be doing this immediately if we have the, um, go ahead from all of you to begin, um, increasing our workforce capacity and, um, vaccine and the availability of vaccine, as I explained earlier, um, may be limited at first. So we will, um, look at tailoring this ramp up to meet the demand in our community as well as the available back's vaccine and then operate within the phases that we're allowed to go through, um, as the state, uh, lets us know.
So Nancy, I did some kind of rough estimates as to would this be enough to provide for vaccination of everyone in the city? I think we're pretty confident that there would be sufficient funds to do that, hiring new people and also using our staff somewhat. You want to comment on that at all, Nancy?
Sure, I would. So we're, um, actually, um, have a target date of early June to try to get through vaccinations, but we know that that's, uh, pretty ambitious. Another factor that we have to look at is the, um, current trials in children. So, you know, if children are going to be vaccinated, that's going to add another small group to our, uh, vaccination pool. Um, but then looking at, um, what we need to hire and how much, um, we actually feel that we can do this within the amount allotted. So, um, we're very excited. We want to make sure we have both our team here and teams that can work together to augment, um, the services we currently provide. Uh, hopefully we can ramp this up really quickly.
Do you have further questions, Alderman Nichols?
Yes, I do. Um, Director McKinney, you and I had a, uh, conversation today about what scaling up looks like and what it would mean, uh, for residents of Manassia. And so could you, um, review what that looks like and what people might be able to expect in the coming months?
Sure. Um, so basically right now, like I said, we're in this one A category and that's going to last probably through the end of February. So we'll be looking, um, in the end of February to increase the efficiencies of our current staff. And we have a scheme in place to be able to, um, administer more vaccines with our registered nurses and with the assistance of, uh, chief clones, uh, firefighters, because they are emergency medical responders. So through February, we're hoping to move that, um, the vaccination up a bit. Um, and then March first is when we can start to work on, um, individuals in that one B group, which of course includes the educators and childcare providers, um, some of those other groups that we talked about earlier. And also it coincides with the time that we have the National Guard in our city at City Hall to assist us. And, um, we're looking at, um, increasing significantly the ability with National Guard. And if we have our staff working alongside them, we'll be able to actually administer more doses then. And then through, um, March and April, um, as we start looking at getting into the general populations beyond that one B and into one C, um, we would look to transition possibly to the University of Wisconsin Oshkosh, um, Fox Cities, which is in the planning phase right now. So as we start moving through the general population, it's going to take more workforce and we would add more days to the, um, vaccinators' schedules. So that's just a glimpse of, of how we would move forward through, um, the timeline. And again, what we're trying to do here is, um, augment our clinics and what we can do with other available community assets, um, so that we can, you know, get everybody vaccinated and try to do the best we can to suppress this disease. It's sort of like, this is, um, again, you've heard it compared to a marathon, not a sprint. However, right now, we're in that phase where we're actually, um, trying to get vaccinations out so that we can stay ahead of the virus and the, and the, um, variants that are coming along with it. So that's sort of how we're stepping through this and how we see this planning go into effect. Um, and it's going to take some time, as you've been hearing, but I think we've got a fairly good plan and a manageable budget and the resources to be able to do a good job with it.
And as you, um, add personnel and, um, move through those months, will you also be increasing the number of vaccines you can administer?
Yes, um, we think that's, well, number one, um, just having the workforce to be able to deliver more vaccines is going to help us increase the number. Then adding days to the schedule will help, um, as well as looking at efficiencies that they gain while working with the vaccine. And again, um, and as, as I mentioned before, if we get a one dose vaccine, it's, it's going to make things go even quicker. Um, the balance we have right now, as I explained earlier, is that we have to think about two vaccines, not just one. So for every person that's vaccinated, we have, have two appointments. Um, and I think we'll be able to, you know, really manage that a lot better. Um, in the coming weeks and months, as we get more accustomed to all of this. And then also, like I said, as the vaccines are approved that are one dose series, um, that will be another boost to this. So, um, days, amount of vaccine we receive will be a factor. Um, and then the ability to administer it quickly and efficiently is our goal. So safety, efficacy and efficiency are, are what we're after here.
And I think what I'm hearing is that the vaccine will be the primary driver.
The vaccine will definitely be the primary driver. And I know that's frustrating. Um, so that's one limitation. Another limitation, of course, is, um, making sure that we complete out these phases in the timeline that the state would like to see us do this. Um, so, but definitely the vaccine is the driver for every health department, every health system um, and pharmacy, um, across Wisconsin.
Thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Nancy, uh, how we notify people for their second shot?
Um, when they get their first vaccine, we already, and so, so we've been vaccinating for three, three weeks already. And we have done, um, you know, as I mentioned before, police and fire, and we've, um, done, uh, those one A eligible school district employees, et cetera. Um, so when they make a vaccine appointment, we make the following, follow-up appointment at the same time. So that there's, um, another appointment already scheduled.
Okay. And with all these grants and things that were with CARES Act and all this, uh, this isn't costing us any more money than what, uh, our normal budget is, correct?
No.
Okay. And, uh, it was brought up by Sandra about maybe the, why don't we use the senior center facility instead of bringing everybody inside a city hall for the vaccination?
Well, you know, those are considerations I'll bring back to our team.
Cause, uh, I was thinking, you know, if somebody gets sick and, you know, you got carpeting in, in the city hall building and senior center, you don't have carpeting and, uh, you know, it's easier to walk down for people with blockers and, and, uh, canes and things. Uh, so I think that should be a consideration. And then so far you've vaccinated just national employees. And is this, is this just for Manassia people, our residents?
Pardon me?
Is, so far you've vaccinated, uh, city employees? And is this, but it's open to the public now. Is that just for residents of the city of Manassia?
So, um, it will be, obviously, we will say the Manassia Health Department is sponsoring, uh, a COVID nineteen vaccination clinic, gear our efforts toward encouraging our residents to make appointments and to avail themselves. Um, this is a federal asset. These are federal assets that we're working under. So we have to keep that in mind. And we also have to keep in mind that, um, some of the other efforts that we're engaged in also see Manassia residents. So, um, that's, that's how we're approaching this. And, um, we are basing all of our um, estimates on the Manassia population. Um, both the Manassia population of, you know, the total population, but we look specifically at the sixty-five plus age group and people sixteen to sixty-four that are, um, will be eligible for the vaccine. So that's how we've been, um, planning um, for vaccine administration here.
Okay. And, uh, if you get the vaccine, both shots, uh, are you completely, I mean, I know it's, is that ninety-nine point something that you're, that you can't get the, the virus or can you still get the virus?
So I'm, I don't want my memory to fail me here, but, um, I believe it's ninety-four percent effective in getting the dis- but I believe it's 94% effective in getting the disease. But there may be instances where people will get milder disease. It is thought, you know, when they get their vaccines, they should be wearing a mask and distancing because it's thought that there would still be virus in the mucous membrane. So they may be able to, even though they're not sick because they've been immunized and have immunity, that they could perhaps be transmitting it to others. So we're asking people at this time to keep masked and distanced.
Okay. And when will we get past this point where, for instance, most of us had smallpox and measles and different vaccines through our lifetime? And is it after we obtained like herd immunity, is that when we don't have to worry about this anymore?
Yeah, I mean, it's called community immunity. So we really want as many people in our community to be vaccinated as possible so that we can have maximum protection. So that's why, you know, and I know this isn't the most popular thing to talk about regional approaches, but quite frankly, our borders are impervious. People shop here, people shop there. We are concentrated on our jurisdiction, but we also want to make sure that our neighboring communities have resources as well. Not that we'll provide them, but that we work together, kind of like the geese all following in the same direction and kind of doing the same thing. We want to make sure that we have community immunity. And we're focused on the city of Manassas.
Okay. Thank you. One other comment. I think the senior center, we put that large on in on the bat for a couple hundred thousand dollars. And I think that would provide better access for the seniors getting this vaccine rather than in the city hall building. Thank you.
Yep, I'll bring that back to our incident command.
Thanks.
See, no further discussion. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Rappala?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor? Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenich?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item case, held over items. The first item is check, holdover check. Do we have a motion? So at this point, we would...
Mayor?
Alderman Nichols?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. There's a motion to approve?
If that's in order. Motion to approve the check 70406 regarding the Landmarks facade improvement grant.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So motion, a second? Is there a discussion? Alderman Nichols? Yes, no?
Yes. First, I want to thank Director Schrader for this, for the several conversations that he and I have had regarding this issue and for his willingness to bring a plan forward to address it. I do have at least one question. The first being, has the check already been issued?
Mayor, do you want me to address any of this?
If you would like. I'm guessing yes, the check has been issued, correct?
Yeah, and I just want, I just want everyone to be clear about that.
Do you have other questions?
Common Council is not approving the check. There was, is a policy and a body that was designated to oversee that policy and implement it did so. And if the Common Council does not like how it was interpreted, their recourse is either ask the city attorney to go into circuit court, to have a circuit court determine whether or not the decision that was made by that body was reasonable or was it arbitrary and capricious? Or they could change the policy and provide greater input with respect to what it is that the council wants approved or not approved.
Do you have another question, Alderman Nichols?
Yes, thank you, Attorney Captain. And I'd be remiss if I did not mention that I had several email conversations with you as well. So thank you for that. And I fully understand what Attorney Captain is saying, and I knew that. However, I also felt it important to start the process of perhaps a change in policy or at least a clarification of one, which is what Director Schrader has put before us today. So with that in place and knowing that it would come to the Common Council, I am comfortable removing this item from the agenda and moving forward in the fashion outlined in the memorandum.
Alderman Sevenich?
Thank you, Mayor. And I also have had a lengthy conversation with Sam and we discussed the policy and the shortcomings of this decision that was made. It was an inappropriate one according to our policy. I do respect the Landmarks Commission, what they were trying to accomplish. And their intent was obviously good. And that's understandable. But when the policy is about a facade, it's for the facade, not for anything on the inside of the building. Also, the check is being written out to the individual who does not own the property. These facade grants go to the property owner. And if I'm not mistaken, I believe the property owner is the McClone family or something because they had it in the past. It changed hands since then or whatever.
Yeah.
So...
It was sold recently, so...
Oh, it was? Okay.
Yeah. So I don't remember who it is, but it's not McClones at this point.
So unless it went to her, then that's fine. But I don't believe she's the owner of the building.
No.
That's my point. So Pam and I had a long, good conversation. I gave him some pointers. He's going to put together a different agreement. I totally disagree with the city attorney when it comes to whether we decide what gets spent and what does not get spent. That is our number one job. It is, it is one of our general duties that we handle all finance. And I'm going to read this. "The Common Council shall have the management and control of the city property, finances, highways, streets, navigable waters, and the public service, and shall have the power to act for the government and good order of the city for its commercial benefit and for its health, safety, welfare, and convenience of the public, and may carry its power into effect by either doing license, regulations, suppressions, borrowing, taxation, special assessments, appropriations, fines, imprisonment, and other necessary or convenient means. The powers hereby conferred shall be in addition to all other grants and shall be limited only by express language." That is Section 2-2-6. Under our general duties, under Section D, under the, for the Common Council, "The city finances, the Common Council may levy, provide for the collection of taxes and special assessments, may refund any taxes or special assessments paid and any part thereof when satisfied that the same was unjust or illegal, and generally may manage the city's finances. The bucks stop with us." And this is a problem I've had with the city for the longest time. I've taken this up with the last three finance directors. And our problem is, is that we go ahead, we send out the checks, and then you come to ask and ask for approval of that for us to rubber stamp. Well, that is garbage. Somehow, I would like for us to work together so that somehow we don't send those checks out until tomorrow, like the ones we just approved. And I understand that some of the problem has been, well, we have to, we have to get those out as soon as possible. Well, I've been in business for more than 30 years and 99% of all businesses allow 30 to 90 days for payment. We meet at least twice a month, minimal, which means every two weeks that we should be able to issue these payable checks that we approve. And I have warned all three finance directors that maybe one day we are not going to be in agreement on one of these checks. And then what's going to happen? Because you've already sent the check out. These are checks and balances. This is what works for our community. We don't have just one way of doing things. And this is the proper procedure. Again, I'll say it again, the buck stops with us and nobody else. I'm not going to vote for this, just out of principle. I would vote for it because I think that if I would vote for it was because I think the Landmarks was trying to do something good for the community and for this business. But I think they misinterpreted the policy itself. And I'm looking forward to working with Sam to get that policy correct. After all, I and Alderman Taylor and Greg Kyle are the ones who put this policy together some 17 years ago. And I also implement the same policy for the Doughty Island Development Council. So this isn't something that's new to me or to James. It's something that we were very passionate about and know a lot about. And I'm a little upset that it went this direction. I understand its intentions and the good-heartedness that came from the Landmarks, but you've got to stick to the policy.
Your Honor?
Attorney Captain?
If I could ask then Alderman Sevenich, if you could read the definition of facade that is in that policy?
Sevenich, by the way.
Definition of facade.
And if you could explain what that means?
I guess I really don't want to debate what that policy was. I think that Alderman Sevenich and I might disagree on the policy that we use for council payable and payroll. And we could discuss that again. And we could have a weekly meeting if the council so desired so we could get those checks out. There are going to be some situations, like when we're closing on a property or other emergency situations, that I don't think we could approve those checks beforehand. But I would, and some things we are, when we issue a purchase order, we're bound to also pay for. So we have, there'd be a lot of approvals here. But we could work out something different if that's what the council wishes to do. But I don't want to... Pardon?
I'm trying to be fair. And that's all I'm asking, that we try to do this different. Because the way we have it set up now, we're basically a rubber stamp.
We can talk about it if you want to in the future.
Your Honor?
Yes.
If I, if I could explain and read this actual statute that might help the council understand?
Yes, go ahead.
And this is Wisconsin statutes. "The adoption of the budget shall be authority for the expenditure by a department for the purposes therein provided and of the amounts assigned to the department thereby. And no further action by the Common Council shall be necessary to authorize any department to make such expenditures, except that as provided herein. It shall not authorize the expenditure of any money from the contingent fund of the Common Council." Just, the Common Council can decide how it wants, but I don't want people to misunderstand what the statutes provide. When the Common Council adopts a budget, except for those times, obviously, when there are things that need to go to the Board of Public Works, to the Plan Commission, to the Park Board. You know, those are typically large items. Those, you know, go back through the council for approval. And if the council decides that, you know, it costs too much and they don't want to move forward with that, you know, then that's up to them. But what is in the budget, once it's approved as far as expenditures within a department, those individual checks are not being approved by the Common Council. The authorization comes from the adoption of that budget. So, you know, pens, paper, there's a lot of things, obviously, in running the city, a lot of expenditures. But they cannot be processed. And there's another statute for that that identifies that the finance director, you know, there's a process in place and there has to be a voucher and there have to be receipts and there have to be, you know, money in that particular budget line item. Otherwise, it cannot be paid out. But there are statutes that deal with that. And in fact, we also have a, an ordinance. If you look at Section 3-1-5 and that one as well, city funds to be spent in accordance with appropriation. And of course, all, I'm not talking about, I'm just talking in general how the process works by statute. So to say that everything, every single check is being approved, that's not what the statutes say. Now, they, there is an accounting that is required by the finance director. And that's what the director is doing for the Common Council, providing that accounting of all of the checks for the very purpose of the council, you know, asking questions about what is this check for? You know, to ensure that the funds are being spent according to their wishes and to their policies and to the, in consideration of whatever was adopted within the budget. So I just don't want people to misunderstand how, you know, the process, which is totally separate than what I have heard a member of the Common Council complain about this particular check, that that's different.
Alderman Grady?
Thank you. I didn't know if Alderman Sevenich was done because they had a lay down.
My dog was making noise and I didn't want everybody hearing.
Okay. So I go back to the day when I... Okay, so I go back to the day when I first became an alderman, and the check register and stuff would come out and, oh, don't you, well, Ted, these are already been approved. I go, why is it even on the agenda then? But I understand some of that. Maybe we'll have a workshop, or maybe this is separate. I don't want to spend much time on this, because certain things like payroll and taxes and certain things like Captain Attorney did allude to, have to go out on a timely fashion. And us as aldermen, I don't think we should have the control or the power to say, no, you can't send that check out. But maybe there's another process or another review of this, but that's, that was just my thought. So I, I agree. I know where Stan's coming up from, and I know where the Captain Attorney's coming from, so maybe we can work this out.
Alderman Sevenich.
Even Attorney Captain said that we do this so we can pull it out and look at it and discuss it and see if it met the policy. And but that's exactly what we're doing, and, and it didn't do those things. You know, a budget, I, a budget is a tool for our community to work under and work with, okay? And that gives our department heads something to go by. It's not written in stone. If it was, then you should have finished the Pier Street, and you should spend the exact dollar amount that's in there and don't ask for any more, or don't, or, or don't spend any less. That's crazy. That's why we are here as a body to make those calls and make those decisions. Back to the policy. The other thing too, and I, I would have to ask Sam this, because this is one thing I didn't ask you the other day, is that, even reading the old policy, it stated that you needed at least two bids. Were there two bids for this project?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I would have to take a look back. I certainly hope so. And, and again, like I've explained to a lot of the aldermen that I've discussed with this, you know, reading this policy by Br- by Bratum, I think it certainly leaves holes for misinterpretation. And I think that's really what we need to do here, regardless of if we can talk about this check or how we do financing in the future, payroll or whatnot. What I think we can all agree on is let's move forward. And I think we're always trying to do that as a, as a community and a community development department, is try to say, let's move forward. And, and that's really what is stated in, in my memo tonight is we understand there was, you know, some, it wasn't as clear, you know, there. I think Alderman Sevenich, you had mentioned tonight, it was good-hearted by the Landmarks Committee, but it was not, I guess, per the initial intent. And that's why we're having this conversation on the check, not if we're going to approve the check or not approve the check, or, or how you get the money back. But so I, I really do want to focus on, let's move forward. And that's kind of what we had recommended in the policy. Again, reading through this, there are certainly some gaps, some holes. Let's clean it up. Let's bring it to Landmarks with a red line from staff. Let's bring that back to Common Council. Let's all get back on the same page and move forward.
And that's what I'm looking forward to doing, and I think that's why Sam wrote that memo, so that we can get this corrected, so we're not here again. And, and I have to apologize for the council when I get passionate like this. But it's because I bring these up because it, I warned in the past that these are things that could happen, and now they're happening. And we could have avoided this. So I'm willing to work with Sam on that. And I see other council members want to speak. And I apologize if I get a little too passionate about this. But, you know, we're elected to do this, and we're doing a darn good job of it. And I just want to make sure that we do the right thing. And I'm willing to move forward also, Sam.
Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. On this particular check, I wanted to just say that the Landmarks Commission, I think, does, they are so passionate, and, 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 and that's something, a, a committee that I don't think I would be on, but they are. And, and so I will vote for this check this time around. But we need to, my, okay, so my, I just want to throw this out there. We won't talk about it. I just want to say it, that then why do we even ask about certain checks, aldermen, and talk about it? Checks have already been sent. That, I just, my thought. Thank you.
Alderman Rappel.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. One comment. Sam, I did drive by the, the, the building in question on Friday, and nothing's been done to the window. So we give out the check before the work is done. I just curious on that. Shouldn't the check be done, paid after the work is done? Also, Landmark Committee, I give you guys great, uh, great efforts. I saw a picture on Facebook. Boy, Manassas had a beautiful downtown a long time ago. We had even a building called the Orpheum. And where have all these nice buildings gone? Thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think it's about, nobody here wants to stop moving forward, Sam. We're all moving forward with this. We write policies, and we expect them to be followed. And that's why we have policies. And Alderman Sevenich, myself, Bill Hertziger, Greg Kyle, we had an architect on the commission back then, I forget his name. And we collected Cedarburg, Madison, Milwaukee, all the communities around the state. And we compiled a, a new ordinance for this. And it was a very lengthy process. When it comes to facades, it's pretty straightforward. The owner will come in, meet with the director, and discuss it. Did that happen, Sam?
We did have discussions before the application, yes.
With the owner of the building?
I do not believe the policy states the owner of the building. Again, this is why, you know, we can go back and forth. I can answer all your hard questions. But again, we need to tighten up this policy and move forward.
Yeah, I don't see that as being a big issue. Did the person bring in two written estimates?
Uh, that question was already asked, and like I said.
I was on from my computer for a minute.
I, I can just state, I, as I, if you let me finish, I, I stated, the question was already asked. And as I stated, I, I am not currently aware specifically. I cannot recall back to September, and I have not, not had that file from.
Okay. And we look at, should the city be reimbursed for this? This is a business that's running this. And if it doesn't follow our guidelines, the city should be reimbursed. In our, in our check register here, every week, we reimburse people for something that wasn't charged properly. I never saw an invoice, and I don't see where, where the invoice was from the company. I see that there was twenty-nine hundred dollars plus seventeen hundred dollars worth of cash used to pay for this. That seems rather odd that somebody pays seventeen hundred dollar cash. And but I think we all know that the facade is the outside of the building. And we all know that. The chairman of Landmarks knows that. Sam, you know that. We all know that. We all been around a long time with this situation. And yes, Landmarks does do a good job for the city, and so does Sam. But here, in black and white, the protocol was not followed, and it's pretty straightforward. I think that the, the property at two thirty Main Street should have an increase in its taxes for improvements for forty-six hundred. What was the total amount, Sam?
Alderman Taylor, that is not how assessment works. If you'd like, you can contact.
If you like to debate that, but it's improvement to the building, and it's part of the building. It's, we can't take that off and, 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 and get our money back for it. Maybe we can peel it off and get our money back. And Alderman Rappel said it's not even on the building yet. Is it on the building yet, Sam?
Yes.
It is. Okay. And I mean, we should try to peel it off, but it's an improvement to the building because now it has this, this material on it. And also, it's a business that's operating. They charge ten dollars a person to see this private collection. And I don't think the city should be paying for anything for this private collection. And again, we all know the facade is the outside of the building. Many times, I would ask Greg Kyle about the, the, the different fast food restaurants with all their big advertisement on the window. And he'd say, James, it's on the inside. We can't do nothing about that. And I think you know that, that that's the case with this. And by saying the policy isn't clear or this and that, that's just a bunch of fooling. The policy wasn't followed properly that the city has created. And a mistake was made, and we should get the money back from that business for that mistake. Thank you.
Just want to make one comment, that this was in September that this happened. The minutes were in the packet in probably October. And if we had concerns about this, I would sure hope that people would bring those concerns up on a timely basis in the future, if there's other items like this. We, in good faith, told this business owner to do their work that was approved in the grant. And November, four months later, we come back, and now we have concerns. We, we need to do this on a timely basis. If people see things in the minutes that do not appear to follow the policy, bring it up to us immediately so we can take care of those things.
I'd like to address that, because you know, I've talked about this before in your minutes. And your, our minutes at the city level are garbage.
Well, the minutes are there.
They might be there. So-and-so made a motion, someone seconded, there was some discussion, blah.
Well.
Don't put this on the council with the mayor. This is a policy written, and you didn't follow it.
Are we finished discussing at this point?
No.
Oh, Alderman Gotti, sorry.
I've been waiting, but people don't follow Robert's rules here. I agree. For one thing, I'm just going to state a point that was brought up last council, was the inside or the outside of the building. And Sevenich, Alderman Stan Sevenich said, if the vinyl was put on the outside of the building, it would have qualified for landmark facade grant. That plastic would have lasted four months. So throwing good money away for that kind of a mentality is pretty poor planning, too. Yes, Randy, the filters have been put on the inside. No one gets paid until the job is done. So the job was complete, and the check was issued. And I do believe there were a few different companies that had quoted prices to Kim Massey. And so I just want to get those issues out on the table here. So thank you. Next.
Alderman Sevenich.
Thank you, Mayor. Tom, I don't disagree with you on that. All I was saying, and, and I wouldn't, wouldn't want to see that put on the outside of the building either, because you're absolutely right with our climate, they want the last. But my point was, is that the facade is for only the outside of buildings, not that she should have put it on the outside. That, that was my only point. So, and I do, I, I do believe that the Landmarks was really trying to help out a business and felt that this was an important change to, to help out a business. But all I'm saying is that the policy was not followed the way it was supposed to. If it makes this body feel better, I'll vote for the check. Just so you show, so I can show that I'm being sincere about this. Because I'm more about the policy than the check itself. That the policy needs to be followed. And I agree with Sam that there's some loopholes. It needs to be written better. I don't remember the policy being written the way he has shown it to me. There might have been some changes over the past seventeen years. So I think it's a, it's a good time now to change that so that everyone's agreeable with it, so that we're not here again having this argument or debate.
Alderman Taylor.
People should just admit their mistakes. Also, what I would like to say is that I would like to see the other estimates before we approve this check. The, the center was estimates. He should have been in the city file. Let's see the estimates before we approve this. And I'll, I'll make a motion to hold it for two more weeks, so we see the other estimates.
Motion dies due to lack of a second.
Mayor, we, Mayor, we couldn't hear you.
The motion dies to lack of a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor.
Alderman Sevenich.
I would suggest, though, that even though the motion failed, that, and I'm sure Sam kind of already said that, that he would follow up on it. So if you, if Sam, if you find those, if you could email those to, to the council, that would be great. Thank you.
Alderman Schmidt.
I would like to see those two mailed to the council.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you. I just wanted to kind of just speak my two cents worth. I've sat here very quietly. I thoroughly understand that some people think that policies or procedures weren't followed. Sam says, you know, we need to take a look at this. I agree. Let's take a look at it. Things that were generally brought up and put together seventeen years ago maybe need a little revamping today. However, all that being said, the work was done. We have a beautiful exhibit in Manassas. And everyone on this Common Council, I have heard say, we need more people to come downtown Manassas. We now have something that is bringing people in. Yes, James, they're maybe paying ten dollars a ticket to come in, but they are coming to Manassas.
Personal attack, Mayor.
That would have gone somewhere else. That would have gone.
What is your, hold on, Alderman Schmidt, what is your, Schmidt, what is your point of order, Alderman Taylor?
Mayor, Alderman Gotti just told you you're not following the rules. And now you're not following the rules. Point of order, you know you're supposed to stop it right now.
What is your point of order, Alderman Taylor?
It's a point, it's a, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you. It's a personal attack.
No, that was not a personal attack, James. I said you brought up that someone was paying ten dollars a ticket. I just acknowledged.
The mayor has to rule.
I said it was overruled. Alderman Schmidt, you can continue.
All I'm trying to say
I appeal.
I want people to come downtown Manassas as well.
I appeal your ruling to the council.
Everything else aside, and let's just vote on this and
Point of order, Mayor.
Procedures.
Point of order.
Thank you.
Mayor, I did make my appeal to you, and you are not following the rules as always, Mayor.
What is your point of order?
Before, I had to follow a rule that I couldn't speak. And yet, your point of order, you better look it up and figure out how it is. There's another policy not being followed by your administration. You know exactly what it is, Mayor. Your lack of leadership here, running this meeting. You allow personal attacks, and you turn, and you even had to have sounded to Bill Taylor have a, a, a point of order earlier because you attacked me personally. This is the second time tonight. Our personal lives don't matter here.
I'm not sure what you even. Let's continue to move forward.
All your fault.
Mayor, again, if if I could. Like I said, I will vote for this check so that we can make peace on this council and. So that we can work together and work out a good policy. That we can all live with.
We could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Tom Gotti.
Oh, Tom.
Your mic isn't on.
Trying to get I tried to get my mic on. Could you read what the motion is now after all of this?
It's just.
I approve it. Leadership. I approve the check. That's a personal attack, James. I attacked the mayor, not you. Oh, people.
What do you vote, Alderman Tom Gotti?
Yes. I approve that check.
Alderman Ted Gotti.
Aye.
Alderman Repella.
Aye.
Alderman Nichols.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye, because the taxpayers don't pay for personal items for buildings.
Alderman Sevenek.
Aye.
Alderman Langdon.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Mayor, I made a mistake on my vote, but I'll let it go. I was not going to vote for that, and you know that. So. I appeal to my vote be registered as a no.
I'm fine with that. If you would, if the council, is there unanimous consent?
Sure.
Sure, let him change it. Yep. Thank you.
So the motion carries seven one. Item L one is the emergency sick leave policy. Is there a motion?
Okay, I'll make the I'll make the motion. I'll make I'll make the motion.
Okay, so there's a motion by Alderman Langdon. Is there a second?
A second.
It's a motion by Alderman Sevenek. Is there discussion? Well, Alderman Langdon, since you's. Okay, Alderman Sevenek. Did you have discussion?
I'm sorry, I had just left my mic on. Sorry.
Okay.
I was I was switching over to the agenda.
Okay, no problem. Alderman Nichols. Now, Alderman Taylor.
Is this where we are going to give out money to get the shot?
What is on the agenda is. If people are vaccinated and they are quarantined or become ill. They would be allowed to use emergency sick leave. For the time that they are not at work. So it would grant them up to 80 hours of emergency sick leave if they're vaccinated.
Up to June, right?
Thank you for that next.
June, yeah, June. Yeah, June 30. It was meant to be for six months is what we were thinking.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Thank you for that. Thank you for that explanation. I still have to warn you.
Alderman Nichols.
Yes, thank you. So the resolution on the floor extends. Emergency sick leave. To folks who choose to get vaccinated and then get sick. Correct?
Yes, or that would be quarantined.
Or quarantined, thank you.
Needed to care for a family member or a close contact.
This is the this emergency sick leave policy was in effect. Since the beginning of our health emergency. And until December 31, 2020.
I am not sure exactly when it started. This would be the federal. Policy. But in general, yes. It may have not started exactly when our emergency started, but through the end of 2020.
Through the end of 2020. All right. My first question. Is for. Director McKinney, just to clarify some information. Do we continue to be in a health emergency today?
Yes, we are.
And do you know approximately or at least have an estimation? Your best guess about when our most of our employees will even be eligible for the vaccine?
So they will likely be under other essential workers. Some of them may be under. One B depending on how we interpret this. So my best guess is. Some of them may be eligible after March 1. And beyond.
And beyond. So perhaps even when the eligibility opens up for the general public, which we're not sure when that will be yet.
I would say maybe one C, but we don't have clarification from the state disaster. Medical Advisory Group. Yet on one C.
Okay, thank you. So we're not even sure when. Many of our employees will be eligible for the vaccination and we continue to be in a health emergency. If we. And we did extend this benefit to employees. Up until. December 31 of 2020. I don't understand why we wouldn't. Extend this benefit, continue to extend it to everyone. Since we still remain in a public health emergency. That's my first point and. Secondly. The idea of offering a financial incentive. For health purposes is not new. To Manasha. We do this. In our police department, as we just talked about earlier tonight with our physical fitness. Incentive that is paid there on an annual basis. And so that's not something new to Manasha and. The idea of offering a financial incentive. As it relates to the vaccine isn't new either. Many private sector. Employees have already announced their plans and they're doing so to protect their employees and their customers. And I think strongly that our goal should be to have a fully vaccinated workforce. And here's why. Because a fully vaccinated workforce protects our employees. We don't want people coming to work sick. A fully vaccinated workforce protects the people that our employees come in contact with. And it provides. For the continuity and perhaps even enhancement of services. A fully vaccinated workforce mitigates the expensive overtime. That might be incurred due to. An illness or outbreak. And it provides a layer of protection for the people. We serve here in Manasha. And having said that, I have presented an amendment. In. The packet. And essentially what that amendment does. So that members of the public know it extends the emergency sick leave benefit to all employees. Through June 30. And it creates this financial incentive. For all employees to get fully vaccinated. And the incentive works as follows. There is a. $50 incentive for the first inoculation, since we're dealing with a two part vaccine. And $100 after the second inoculation. That's to make sure and incentivize the the need to get two vaccinations. And that would be extended to all employees who have been fully vaccinated at the time it is made available. To them. And the cost to do that and include the Manasha Fire Rescue is. $22,000, $22,200. And so with that, I would like to offer this amendment, make a motion to offer this amendment to resolution. Two one twenty one.
Is there a second? Okay, too late, steady seconds? No? So the motion dies due to lack of a second.
Mayor.
I'm not sure if Alderman is finished yet.
Sorry.
Okay, Alderman Sevenek, she is finished.
Oh, okay, I thought so. We are only voting on. R two dash 21, right? And she she just offered. Her amendment, correct? And that. I just want to make sure everyone understands and that failed on a. On a no second. So right now. Now we will only be discussing. Your man, your resolution.
What was in the packet that was directed to staff? Yes. This is what we discussed at the last personnel committee meeting.
Yep.
Do you have anything else?
I'm looking at it. Hold on, I have a hard time switching back and forth. So. I think James asked earlier. Basically, what this does is it extends the federal. Guideline that we had before.
Yes.
Till June. But it also incentivizes individuals. To get their shot, basically. To get their shot. Because if. If they. End up getting COVID and refuse a shot and they get COVID. They're going to have to use their vacation time and we're not going to give them. This incentive.
It only extends the incentive if you are vaccinated. Or if you get vaccinated, if you weren't eligible at the time you get sick, if you get vaccinated as soon as you are eligible.
Right. And then also, if you're vaccinated and let's say a family member. Becomes sick, then it comes into effect.
Yes.
For something to that side. All right. Just so everyone's clear.
Alderman Langdon.
Thank you, Mayor. Just remember every every man, everyone, all Alderman and and even Nancy. People don't do not have to take the shot. It's not a mandatory that they have to take a shot. It's not mandatory for the firefighters, not mandatory. For the police. You cannot make somebody take the shot. Because they may have reasons why they're not taking it. And we don't know. So we can't say you got to take that shot. So I just want everybody to know that. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing that I said makes anyone get shot. It's another layer of incentive and Attorney Captain. Can you address the question about? People maybe having reasons not to get the shot and would they be included? In this. Benefit if they fell ill?
I thought the motion died.
No, this would be in the current resolution.
Yes.
Attorney Captain, are you still there?
I am, yes. In the current resolution. What it indicates, which we would have to do by law anyways, is if someone. Asked for a reasonable accommodation. Due to some disability. As it related to. Them not being able to. Take the vaccine or perhaps. You know, they have to wait a longer period of time or perhaps it has to be taken at their physician's office instead of at work. I I can't really guess at what a reasonable accommodation would be, but those are. Some of the things that we would have to consider. And and by law, we would have to consider it whether or not it was in there anyways. But I just put it in there because I want employees to know that we do follow the law.
Is there any other discussion?
And if you want me to comment on whether or not an employer has the ability to require. An employer does have an ability to require someone to take. A vaccine. There are many instances where businesses require their employees to take, for example, a flu shot. In this particular case. Obviously, it's something so new. Employers are not really comfortable. In making it a requirement of. You know, being employed. But I certainly could see that. You know, for. It isn't anything I'm would be recommending at this time. Certainly, if we were a nursing home. Or a hospital, I you know, you may think different, but my understanding is that at this time. Because the vaccine is so new. That not even those types of employers are requiring their employees to become vaccinated.
So Alderman Nichols, are you? You still have other questions?
I don't have a question. I just want to point out that we don't even know when. The bulk of our employees will be eligible for the vaccine. So what we're saying is that from now until whenever you get the vaccine, yes, we encourage you to be responsible and wear your mask. And social distance, do all those things. But if you you might not be eligible to get your vaccine until May, March, April, May. And then. If you get sick. Will help you out. But other than that. After after six months now, you're just on your own until you can get your shot. And then if you get sick, we'll help you. But we're not going to offer any sort of incentive to actually. To actually encourage people to get the vaccine when we know at this point it's in the best interest. Of our employees because of their contact. With members of our community. If we're talking about protecting. A community from the negative effects. Of COVID-19. Then we need to do. Everything we can to encourage people to get vaccinated. And in my. I this doesn't go far enough for me. Thank you.
Alderman Repella.
Ah, thank you, Mayor. Attorney Captain, I actually will agree with you. You did a nice job explaining that about the. Whether you need to take the shot or not. Talk to a nurse at St. Elizabeth. She is required to take the flu shot in October. The the regular flu shot. If they don't take it, there's some things that can happen at St. East because they're required to take it. The COVID shot, it's on their own. If they want to take the COVID shot and live or not take the COVID shot, possibly die. It's up to those nurses. They do not have to take it. So, thank you.
Alderman Taylor.
Mayor, I just want to say when the department head speaks, you're supposed to ask for unanimous consent. Thank you.
I'm sure the committee can allow the department head to speak. Alderman Repella, did you have something?
One more thing. And she was against. Paying people to get the shot. They're getting paid to work. If they don't want to get the shot. They shouldn't get paid. She didn't know of anybody who was getting paid to get take that shot. So, thank you.
Alderman Repella, who is she? Is that? That the nurse?
A nurse at St. Elizabeth.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it was an attorney captain. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Tom Gotti.
Aye.
Alderman Ted Gotti.
Aye.
Alderman Repella. Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Nay.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevigny?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion carries seven one.
We already took up item two at the very beginning of the meeting. Seems like a long time ago. Item M was appointments. Is there a motion? Oh, Alderman Nichols, did Alderman Sevigny, either one? Alderman Sevigny, apparently.
Okay. I have the agenda. Uh, thank you, mayor. At this time, I'll move for your appointment of Lindsay. Could you pronounce the last name for me?
I forget exactly how she pronounced it.
D, 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 she is to the library board.
Sounds good.
Of two one of twen, twenty-one to seven one of 2021.
I'll second that.
Okay, this is.
Time frame, mayor?
It is. This is feeling uh.
Fill in a spot.
Yeah, so someone who is no longer on the board.
Okay.
Alderman Nichols, did you?
I just want to say to Lindsay, I, I apologize if I mispronounce your name, but trust me, my name gets mispronounced even today.
I just called her Lindsay when I talked to her, so I'm not quite sure. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Were there any opposed? No. Seeing that the motion carries.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Um. I didn't want to take away from Lindsay's appointment, but I believe that today is Vicky's last meeting as she moves on to retirement. Director Lens, is that correct? Is this her last meeting?
No.
Retirement changed slightly.
Yeah, um. The chairman of the board, Bob Golds, convinced me to stay another month. So it's another month from now.
Okay, we'll do this again in a month then.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Vicky.
Good for you.
How? Uh, item always public comments. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak?
Sandra, the Bill Taylor, five forty-five Broad Street. Yes, this was a long meeting. Um. First of all, regarding the last resolution that was passed, to the best of my knowledge, I think the city may have jumped the gun in that the CARES Act expired December 31st. That was put into effect under President Trump. We now have a new administration and uh President Biden is working on another stimulus package and I can almost guarantee you that there will be funds in there to supplement the city for COVID-related expenses related to the same situation that they uh paid for the last time. So now what would have been paid for by the federal government, the city will probably be footing the bill. Um, and you can shake your head no, Tom, or Ted, but it's very likely that that will come about. Um, secondly, I am disappointed with the mayor breaking the tie regarding the agreement with the branch fire department. Um. One of the there was, the question was raised regarding if it was a full-time fire department, part-time fire department per their uh membership information. It said they have 20 career, five part-time and 30 paid-on-call personnel. So again, we are putting the interests of other communities ahead of the taxpayers in the city of Manassas. Then on to the check register. Um. Thank you, Alderman Sevigny, for uh calling out the few questions I had. Uh, I would like to encourage the mayor to invite the JPC group to the council to give an update. It's been several, several, several years, decades since they last appeared to give an update on what kind of effort they are doing in marketing that parcel. Um. Because we are invested in that project. Um, in regards to the I thought there was another thing. Okay, I'm trying to think. Um, regarding the landmarks discussion. For clarification, uh facade is a French word, meaning the face of the building, especially the principal front that looks onto a street or open space. It's my opinion that this policy in ordinance has been in place for what did they say, 17 years? And this is the first time any misinterpretation ever occurred. So I don't think it's the policy's fault. I think it's the department's fault. And I think it was the department did not stop it in the bud and forward it on to landmark. So to me, it's the department's fault, the department's fault for allowing this to occur. I'm also very disappointed that the check register goes out before the council has an opportunity to review it. Um. As Alderman Sevigny again said, most businesses wait 30, 60, 120 days before they get paid. There's no reason that everything has to be paid immediately. Um, the mayor was again making excuses. It, um. It's very unfortunate that that these things occur and I put the blame on administration. And again, it's another reason to have a legal firm run this city rather than an appointed attorney. I would love to make some comments regarding the public works agenda, but I know I can't. So with that, I will leave you. Have a good night.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Sorry. And seeing no one else, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second. Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.